Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the city council meeting for Friday, January 14th, 2011. We're here in the John F. R. Council chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank those members of the council that are here on time. Pursuant to council rules, all members should be here at 10:00. It is 10:10 right now, and only council members Alarcon, Coetz, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Zine are here. There is one council member with an excuse. Mr. Westen is excused to arrive late today. Otherwise, the following council members are now late. Councilmembers Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Perry, and Smith. They'll please join us as soon as possible. We are broadcast live on Channel 35, and we welcome our viewers throughout the city's cable system on Channel 35. We're also rebroadcast in the evening. We're available two or three other ways through the Internet, through lacity.org, which is the city's homepage, and where there are links to our city departments and a wealth of information on ways to improve the quality of your life here in Los Angeles. But we also stream from that homepage our council meetings live, and we archive on the Internet all of our past council meetings. Our agendas are also made available there. Seventy-two hours in advance and throughout city buildings in person and the city clerk's office. Twenty-four hours in advance for our special meeting items. If any items that are on today's agenda are ones that you'd like to be heard on today, you can do that here in person or in one of our remote facilities in Van Nuys or San Pedro City Halls, if that's closer to where you live. And those items, you just have to fill out a speaker card and hand that to the sergeant-at-arm. If it has not yet had a public hearing, you will be heard today. If it's had a public hearing, it requires a council member to reopen that and a vote of the council. We're also available through your telephone. If you call the following number, you can listen into the council meetings and our committee meetings. That number is (213) 621-CITY, (213) 621-CITY. So whether it's here downtown, in San Pedro, or Van Nuys, through the Internet, through Channel 35, or your telephone, there is a wealth of ways to follow your city council in action, and also online is all the supporting materials that council members read on each of these items that are before us today. Again, thank you to those council members who are here on time. We do have a number of presentations on Fridays where we mark notable occasions, individuals, organizations, and others who are contributing to the well-being of Los Angeles. And we do have six presentations today as well. Council District Two will be the first presentation, and we followed by a number of other presentations by council members from the 13th, 6th, 4th, 5th, and 8th districts. So with that, I would like to recognize Council District Two, sorry, Council District Four for a very special presentation to begin. Mr. Labange.
Mr. Parks, stay right here. Jefferson in Vermont, yes. Jefferson in Vermont. Good morning, Mr. President, and good morning, all members of council and the public. It's great to have a Friday where we could salute people who are special. This is a very special day as we honor the Korean-American Day in Los Angeles. I'm joined by the great Bernard Parks, who represents the great 8th district, and it's in the 8th district, which was the first known Korean-American business in Los Angeles, as right there on Jefferson in Vermont. And from that, from that impact of a business in a community up Vermont to Olympic Boulevard and the Olympic corridor, and Mr. Reyes's district, and then throughout the 10th district, Mr. Westen. Let's have a hand for Mr. Reyes, right there, and all his work he does in the great community. And also for Mr. Westen, Mr. Westen in the 10th district and all of Olympic Boulevard and the Wilshire area. A little hand for Herbie. But also, also, as I say, it doesn't happen unless it comes through the Port of Los Angeles and the 15th district where Janice Han is, where the Friendship Bell is. Over the hundred years, the Korean-Americans have contributed greatly. And what scholars are saying is a story that is all about Los Angeles. It is the immigrants that fueled the economy for the United States. And the challenge for all countries in the world is if they not accept and enjoy and love immigrants. So this is very special, as you all have known. We're joined today by a variety of leaders here, especially our president here in the Federation. Please welcome Scarlett Um, right here. Give her a big hand, right there. She will speak in the morning. And also, we have a special from the Assembly, which you'll speak in a moment, Young Jin Kim from the Assembly, until you're here.
Thank you.
But I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. Parks, to say a few words before we make the formal presentation. Please welcome Bernard Parks. One moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tom. I just feel very pleased to be here. As Tom mentioned, the first business is in the 8th district. Also, the initial Koreatown started in the 8th district, and we're so pleased with the historical church that's on Jefferson Boulevard and a number of things that Korea-Americans have been responsible for. I tell people all the time, if it were not for the Korean-American mom-and-pop stores in the 8th district, there would be a significant less food and items in the 8th district. They carry the brunt of the mom-and-pop stores in the community, and I thank you for it. I believe the last count, there's over 1,800 Korean-American businesses in the 8th district. So thank you for the services you provide, and thank you for the support in the community.
Well, Mr. Parks, thank you very much. And also, we enjoy to be with Mr. Parks in a moment.
A couple other council members we'd like to try and appropriate right now. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning. I want to welcome our guests today. I want to thank Councilor Labange for presenting this great occasion, and all my colleagues in honoring Korean-American Day. In my district and throughout the city, there are so many different landmarks and institutions that have come from all of our great communities that make up this great metropolis we call Los Angeles. But for me, the Korean-American Day represents also unification of all the different sectors of the Korean community. When you look at the churches, the churches that have come into our neighborhoods that have rebuilt, have invested, provided social programs, education, grants, scholarships, engaged the local Boys and Girls Clubs, the chambers, they are a significant presence when we have our cleanup programs. As a matter of fact, on the San Luis River, there's a cleanup day where the Korean churches come together and do a whole section of the river on their own, and they join forces with many other advocates. So you have brought a lot of richness into our communities. You have also looked to your neighbors. You've created bridges. You've developed a relationship, and now the destinations of the churches, the stores, have become part of our American fabric. And for that, I thank you. On Sunday Mass, when I do attend, I get invited. There are hundreds and hundreds of people, for example, at the Young Mac Church, and it happens every Sunday. They bring commerce, they eat at the restaurants, they have book fairs, they have community fairs. It's an amazing sense of love and friendship, and for that, I thank you. Today, in these times of the anti-immigrant environment, you stand out as one that verifies why we need to embrace our diversity, because of the riches you bring, and for that, I thank you. Have a great day. Congratulations, and let's cheer for Korean-American Day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. High rise and in great celebration that we are celebrating today the Korean-American Day. This is so important, and as was said, the fabric of Los Angeles is now intertwined with the fabric of the values of the Korean-Americans. And the patriotism that Korean-Americans really reflect is so important. They are good patriotic American citizens. And I feel so fortunate that I have the home of the Korean Friendship Bell in San Pedro. Because when the people of the Republic of Korea decided to give the United States a gift on our bicentennial in 1976, they chose San Pedro to be the home of that Korean bell. And we ring that bell for freedom, we ring that bell for independence, we ring that bell four times a year. And we always, no matter what we're celebrating down there in San Pedro, whether it's July 4th, our Independence Day, whether it's the Korean Independence Day, whether it's New Year's Eve, or our Constitution Day, we always add on a ring for the peaceful unification of Korea. We always want that, we pray for that, because we know even today, as we celebrate this, there are families that are separated. There are loved ones who are not together, and we want you to know that that is something we hold as a great hope, that one day there will be peaceful unification of Korea. And so I salute all of you, and know that we are going to work very hard. I think my staff is meeting with the council general and the foundation that wants to help restore the Korean bell, and we need to do whatever we can to keep that bell beautiful and shiny, because it represents so much of who you are and how much you have become parts of the hearts of every one of us here in the United States. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And let me just add my good wishes as well to the entire Korean-American community. One out of every 200 Americans is now Korean-American.
One out of every 200.
1.6 million Americans who trace their ancestry to Korea. It's an incredible statistic, and when we look at the lifeblood of Los Angeles, Mr. Reyes and I are kind of on the outskirts of Koreatown. We made sure that it was unified into two districts. Maybe one day it will be a single district, but we are so proud to have the Korean-American community that through its religious endeavors, its business endeavors, its community endeavors, a number of us were just doing a cleanup in Koreatown this past weekend in anticipation of Korean-American Day yesterday, and we had probably 2,000 young Korean-Americans who came from all around the Southland to clean up the community. And I want to thank you for what you have contributed to the great lifeblood of Los Angeles, California, and the United States. Have a very happy Korean-American Day yesterday, we know, but we're celebrating it here today. Congratulations, and onward. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, for doing this.
But thank you very much, Mr. President, all of us. I also want to say that we got to have our special guest here for the National Assembly of the Republic of Korea for brief greetings and remarks, Young Jin Kim.
On behalf of the Republic of Korea, specially National Assembly, I am honored to represent Korea to thank you for this special day. We are delighted that we have about 2.4 million Korean-Americans in the United States of America, of that large portion, 1 million, live in the state of California. And also, we have been grateful for the support of the Korean-Americans. Representing the Korean Republic of Korea National Assembly, I want to thank you, American people, for providing the opportunity to work and live and enjoy the great country of the United States of America. We are grateful for the support of the Korean-Americans. Mr. President and the council members, we want to thank you, because you are the first one who introduced the Korean-American Day in the United States of America, and federal government, United States Congress, follow your good example, and they declare January 13th as the Korean-American Day nationwide. We hope to continue to support the relationship between the Korean-Americans. Koreans and Korean-Americans will be ever grateful for what you did for Korean and Korean-Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And also, we must hear from the president of the Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles, Scarlett Um.
Hello. I'm Scarlett Um. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scarlett Um, and I'm here at this place to represent Korean-Americans as the president of Korean-American Federation of Los Angeles. Today is the 108th anniversary of the Korean-American Day. Today is a very significant day for Korean-Americans who reside in the United States, because the very first Koreans had left their motherlands 180 years ago and had taken the first step in America. On January 13th of every year, we observe official government-established Korean-American Day by reflecting our hardships that we overcame, so we can congregate again as a better community. We are grateful for the celebration of the Korean-American Day. Now Koreatown bears great history, as the area is perceived by, perceived by Preserve America to be a historical landmark. The heart of the Koreatown, the Olympic Boulevard, is going under great changes, so one day we can proudly present Koreatown with a unique identity. We are grateful for the celebration of the Korean-American Day. We are grateful for the celebration of the Korean-American Day. We are grateful for the celebration of the Korean-American Day. We are grateful for the celebration of the Korean-American Day. Lastly, I would like to express our appreciation to Council President Garciotti, 4th District Council Member Tom Labange, 10th District Council Member Herb Westen Jr., and 1st District Council Member Ed Reyes, and 8th District Council Member Bernard Parks and Janice Han, and all other council members on behalf of Korean-American community for their effort. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, thank you very much, members. We're going to close right now, if I could, just for the last remarks, please. Someone that I've known for many years is a fellow hiker in Griffith Park. Please welcome Mr. Chang, Reverend Chang.
Good morning. Thank you very much. You are allowed to come, Korean-American Day celebration at the City Hall. I deeply appreciate your concern this morning. We'd like to contribute our whole energy and gift, everything is to America and for everything is. Thank you very much. Happy New Year. Thank you.
All stay together. Come, Samadha. Come, Samadha.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, and thank you to all of our guests.
Mr. Parks, right here. Officially now, would you grant this, Mr. President?
Got it.
Korean-American Day in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I want a better hand here, location managers, if you want to permit again.
Thank you. We do have 10 members with us now. As we finish that presentation, let's go ahead and call the roll, please. Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coetz, Prokorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Westen, Zine, Garciotti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. First order of business, please. Approval of the minutes. Mr. Labange moves, Ms. Han seconds without objection. This will be approved. Next order of business? Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. We can run through today's agenda, please. Colleagues, if I can turn your attention to any items you'd like to call special today, we'll be taking up those items now. First items, please. Items 1 through 5, our items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 1 through 4 have been submitted and distributed to council. Anybody wishing to call those special? We'll mark, or open the public hearings again, seeing none. Let's go ahead and take up 1 through 5. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved.
Okay, let's reconsider number 4, please. Please open the roll and reconsideration for 4. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Ms. Perry is going to leave room for number 4.
Very much, Mr. President. I would like to be recused and removed from the board on item 4, as I do have a conflict. The developer in this case, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Gabe, have been suing me personally for the last three years, and I want to remove myself from this, since the lawsuit is still pending.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. We'll go ahead and pair the roll on 4. We can take her off the queue, please, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please. Item 6 through 11, our items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. All righty. If there's no objection, that will be considered before us. Any specials, colleagues, and any cards on the public on these?
Sir, we have cards on items 6, 7, and 9.
Okay. We'll close the other public hearings. Anybody wishing to call 8, 10, or 11 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved, and I assume we'll be calling number 12 special, Mr. Parks. Okay, with that, we'll go back to our presentations. I'd like to recognize from the 2nd Council District, Councilmember Paul Prokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Mr. Alarcon to come up and join me, if you'd like, please, Mr. Alarcon. Many of us in this council, and in fact, all of us in this council, and the mayor, have been struggling to save jobs in the entertainment industry here in Los Angeles, because we all know that this industry is Los Angeles's heritage industry, and every single district, thank you, thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and every single district in our city is impacted by the economic activity that this industry continues to bring to our city. But we also know that this is an industry that's under attack, and because of lucrative tax incentives that are being offered by other locations, we're constantly losing these jobs. But as you drove into City Hall today, you probably saw the big production that was going on on the south end of City Hall. And as you drove past that, you saw the people who were working, who wouldn't be working but for that location shoot. You saw the equipment that was being rented, that wouldn't have been rented from a Los Angeles business but for that location shoot. You saw money being spent that's going to be recirculated through our economy and affect businesses throughout each of your districts. So I'm pleased to recognize today four of the unsung heroes in the battle to save Los Angeles film and television jobs. And they are each location managers who are such a critical part of the decision-making process in deciding where a production takes place. So I'm pleased to recognize today Doug Dresser, Mike Fantasia, Andre Juvela, and David Lyons, who together through their work in just recent productions have saved over 1,000 Los Angeles jobs because of the decisions that they've made. So, you know, I think a lot of times when people think of the film and TV industry, they think of the people they see walking on the red carpets and riding in the limousines and so on. It's always important for us to remember that as we keep these jobs here, the people who are being impacted, you know, don't ride in limousines, they go to work every day in a pickup truck. You know, they don't show up at work with a briefcase in their hand, they strap on a tool belt and grab a lunchbox. And those are the ones that we're fighting to, those are the jobs that we're fighting to save, and that these folks are making such a big difference in. So I want to recognize them individually. Doug Dresser is the supervising location manager for Sony Pictures Screen Gems Division, and he's worked on more than 75 feature films, television shows, and commercials, including From Dusk Till Dawn, Jackie Brown, The Mexican, and Burlesque. And I might add that Burlesque was a film that benefited from California's film and television production tax incentive that I authored when I was in Sacramento. Doug's accomplishments have earned him five California on-location award nominations with three wins for Location, Professional, and Location Team of the Year. Doug Dresser.
I'd like to thank the city council for having us and for giving us this great, great honor, and all of your recent efforts in terms of keeping filming in Los Angeles. It makes all the difference in the world. Little steps that the city has taken, whether it's reducing fees, whether it's free parking, everything you do helps us stay home with our families and keeps us from traveling to incentive states. So I just want to make very clear that we appreciate all of your efforts, and they really, really do make a great, great difference in all of our lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Mike Fantasia is a 13-year veteran of the industry who's worked as a location manager and production supervisor on more than 30 feature films, including A River Runs Through It, Free Willy, Blow, and The 310 to Yuma. Mike has been nominated for four California on-location awards for Location Manager of the Year, winning that award in 2005 for Memoirs of a Geisha, and 2010 for his work on The Green Hornet, which is in theaters as of today, being released today. Hope you'll all see it. Which, that film was set to leave Los Angeles before Mike worked to ensure that that $100 million production and its more than 400 jobs would stay here in Los Angeles. So I'm pleased to recognize Mike Fantasia.
Thank you very much. Just like to reiterate that every one of you council members has thousands of film industry professionals that live in your district. We film in every single one of your districts. We spend money in every one of your districts. We are the faces of filmmaking in Los Angeles. Not necessarily the faces that normally come to mind, but we are the faces of filmmaking. We appreciate all of your efforts over the last couple of years to keep filmmaking in Los Angeles. We need to redouble those efforts. We need to increase those efforts. We need to work with the state of California to keep jobs in Los Angeles. Thank you very much for this recognition. And I wanted to just say thank you to Bill Rosendahl, my council member in Mar Vista, who led the charge a couple of years ago as we worked with Chief Bratton to make sure that filmmakers were able to keep their retired LAPD officers on location. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Prokorian, we have some members that wish to speak. Mr. Alarcon, and then our colleagues.
I'm not done.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I was going to go to finish this, then go to Mr. Alarcon, and then members. Okay, all right. All right. Andre Juvela is a constituent of mine, who was born in England and now lives in Valley Glen. Andre now works on The Closer and works tirelessly to keep television and film in Los Angeles. One of her crowning achievements was keeping the new TNT police drama, Rizily and Isles, and its roughly 200 jobs in Los Angeles after it nearly left for Boston. The show was recently picked up for a second season and will continue to provide good, high-paying jobs to Los Angeles residents as a valuable source of jobs and a steady stream of income. Andre?
Thank you, Mr. Prokorian. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. This is an amazing honor for all location managers who have been unrecognized for such a long time, that we all say thank you. And thank you so much to the city council for all the work they've done in the last couple of years to make filming a happening thing in Los Angeles again. It went downhill for a long time, and now I feel like we're really coming up, and it's really working. We need to work a lot harder. There are still too many projects going out of town, and we need to keep them here. There are too many of us who rely on this business, not just the people who actually work in the business, but the entire... work in the business, but the entire city. So thank you, thank you so much, all of you.
Thank you, Andre. Now finally, David Lyons is a location manager for the NBC comedy Community, and like Doug, Mike, and Andre is a member of Teamsters 399 and Location Managers Guild of America. David has worked on nearly twenty projects throughout Los Angeles and just oversaw production of his first feature film, Disney film entitled Prom, which is a story that actually takes place in Michigan. I want to note, it takes place in Michigan, a state that offers a forty percent film and television production tax incentive. And yet, thanks in part to David's hard work, Disney made the decision to shoot that feature here in Los Angeles in Hancock Park. And in dealing with all of the community issues that often come up when productions happen in a neighborhood, particularly a neighborhood where there's some sensitivity to production, David really was... Made a yeoman's effort to smooth relationships with the community, so much so that they welcomed them back the next time that they came. So I'm pleased to recognize David Lyons.
It's very exciting to be here in council chambers, and it's also exciting to see all the work that's being done by you guys and other location managers to keep filming in Los Angeles. And with that continued work, I hope not only can we keep more filming here, but also bring back some of the filming that's left. And thank you once again. This truly is an honor.
Thank you, David. At the outset, Doug talked about a number of the steps that the city of Los Angeles has been taking to make the city more business-friendly for the film and television industry, and very much leading that charge has been the chairman of our Jobs and Business Development Committee, Mr. Richard Alarcon.
Councilmembers, you well know the impact in your industry. The actions that we have taken today are in large part the result of issues that have been raised by the location managers. So we actually want to thank them because the benefactors of the actions that we have taken run the gamut of the film industry, not just the location managers, including also the people of our communities who have a better understanding for how all this works. Location managers aren't just about identifying a location. They're about people who have to understand a community, whether this film shoot is a good location for this particular community, or whether this producer and this director is a good match for a particular community. And they have to assess that. They also have to be... Keep a mindful eye on budget and time and all of these issues, season, and so many other issues that come into play when identifying a location for a particular shoot. So we owe them a debt of gratitude, not just because they contribute their efforts, but because in doing so, they are making our city a better place in which to live. So thanks... Thank you to Paul Kokoyan for his leadership, most importantly at the state level, but also for the location managers in partnering with us to identify the multitude of issues that arise. Finally, let me just recognize the location managers. It was them who gave me the top worst locations in the city to film. And although we never took a vote on those top ten locations, let me tell you, it got a tremendous reaction, particularly from those ten locations, and we saw immediate improvement. The fact was that many of them wanted to sit down at the table and renegotiate the terms of their understandings, and it was very successful. So again, we want to thank the location managers for partnering with us in sometimes confidential... Controversial policy issues that impact one of the most important industries in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. I also want to recognize a few other great champions of this cause. Marilyn Bitner represented the Location Managers Guild, who we all know. Ed Duffy, a business agent for Teamsters 399, and representing Film LA, who's done such a great job really of promoting Los Angeles and bringing communities together around this and helping to ease some of the problems that production inevitably creates. Film LA, represented today by Jody Strong and Donna Washington. All of them have been real champions of this ongoing effort. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have some colleagues. Mr. Rosendahl, then Mr. Garcia.
Lately, I haven't said great, 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 great in a long time because of the budget crisis and the other situations we're going through. But I'm saying great, 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 great right now because the location managers are the ones that talk to the big shots and say, hey, do the film here! Do it in La La Land! And when I saw the headlines in the LA Times, fifteen percent increase directly related to your activities. And I appreciate my constituent making his comment, but when we worked on the retired officers, the whole thing is to give you the supports you need so you can get the locations, get the support of the community, and make the filming here in LA. We know the multiplier effect of a film. It's not just the jobs of here, it's the overall effect on the economy. I've had the pleasure of going to your annual event, Location Managers Annual Event, getting up there and emceeing it, and realizing that the real stars aren't the ones on the camera who make the big bucks. It's you guys, men and women, who find the location, set it up, work with the local neighborhoods, deal with how it would go, and make it happen. So it's been a big thrill for me to be engaged and be involved. Marilyn, just come up a little closer so we can see you, all right? I've known her since nineteen seventy-two, and we go way back in history. And when she came to town, I used to have her on my show and stuff, but I had no idea what she really did for a living. And when I understood what location managers do, I realized it's the bread and butter of making the industry happen. So I want to thank my colleagues for their leadership. Mr. Garcia came and co-hosted it with me the other day when we did that event, but God bless you for all you do for us. Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you all. Be brief because I'll try to adhere to our one-minute rule when it's somebody else's presentation. And thank you so much, Mr. Kokoyan and Mr. Alarcon, for doing this. Yeah, we still have that rule somewhere back there. And thank you really to those who are honored here today. We launched Filmworks LA, a campaign which people can go to filmworksla.com and see just how to film here in Los Angeles. But we're so lucky to be able to come to work and to see a production filming right here on the steps of City Hall, to when we turn on Southland to see a street that we know, to when we're watching Burlesque, to see Hollywood and Vine portrayed so beautifully. We live in the tapestry of the world here in this city. And when we talk to friends who are in another state or another country and we say, that is my backyard, it's incumbent on every single person in every community to figure out a way to embrace this production because it is your neighbor, it is your family, and it is your city. So thank you for making this city sparkle on the big screen and making this city, when the cameras are off, sparkle as well. Congratulations.
Mr. Reyes.
First, I want to rise and to thank all of you who have come to my office, shared details, given us insight, provided the perspective that allows us as policymakers to understand what's critical in terms of moving the types of environments that does say that it is healthy, it is economically viable to have you in this town. So for that end, so I thank you. I still recall the discussion where they first mentioned The Green Hornet, and I kept wondering, well, who is going to be The Green Hornet? And we realized, and said, okay, that's a different twist. Looking at those movies, my kids, I have three teenagers, my daughter's who's in the middle of finishing her college. There are evenings when we just look at movies and we realize, that's Lincoln Heights, that's Highland Park, that's Angelino Heights, that's MacArthur Park. I mean, our city is a living backlog. Our neighborhoods are so diverse. You can have Chicago here, Detroit, New York, I mean, all the different settings throughout the world. You can find a neighborhood that has a reflection of that architecture, that period in which hastens and allows us to enjoy our movies. And that's because of your insight and your commitment to the city. So on behalf of all the men and women who have jobs, that have been able to look at this city with great pride, it really stems from your energy and your persistence in allowing us to work with you, and I thank you. And I thank my colleagues for bringing you to the light and letting us see, please, the names of the faces in making this happen. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
So I first got to salute Paul Kokoyan and Richard Alarcon, whose districts often are some of the industrial-backed support for Hollywood, which is so important. I know Hollywood Reddles is out there in your district, among other facilities. So that's very important for that. And also, I wanted to give a shout-out to Glenn Gaynor, who is the VP from Screen Gems, because as a VP, you know the importance of this. It is so, and as I said upstairs, that nice perception you had, Paul. For me, working here thirty-five years, I've seen many crews. And now right outside, Daniel Lewinsky's film and TV, which is good to see that. I saw Henry Fonda right out this quarter and had a visit with him one day. I say that because for us, to have this at City Hall is real important. And I know Mayor Vera Ghost is very supportive in opening these doors. The same is true for the rest of the city. So I wanted to thank you and say a rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it and grill the bark, and keep people working, because that's our key. And now another line for the movies, you're ready for your close-up.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I represent downtown Los Angeles and South LA, and there's an enormous amount of filming in South Los Angeles, and I appreciate what the film industry has done with respect to hanging in there in downtown Los Angeles with us and continuing to film. I've been able to really learn and be much more discerning based on the outreach done by location managers about why things work in certain parts of the district and others not so well. And I just wanted to highlight one fact about commercials, television commercials versus film. And I think that if... I wanted to... You want to keep teaching people about that and break it down for laypeople so that they understand why some areas have more impact in particular ways, commercials versus film, and what we can do to be helpful. And the other thing that I need to say publicly is your work with Film LA has caused an decrease, a significant decrease, in the number of complaints from businesses and residences. I spend a lot of time in the district, both day and night, just walking around, and it always catches my eye when I see a film shoot. So I'll stop and I'll go and talk to the business owners in the impact zone and ask them how it's going and just get a sense of how it's going. And I just want to say that it's been much, much, much better because when the complaints come, they come to us, and I have to tell you, there have been a lot less. So thank you very much, and we will keep being supportive of you.
And that's our final speaker. I just wanted to acknowledge, Mike, Mr. Rosendahl's resident for the tour that I had at Sony and see the car that we're going to see in the movies now. I want to thank you for that wonderful opportunity. Mr. Kokoyan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to close us out. Mr. Labange mentioned Glenn Gaynor, who is the head of production at Screen Gems and really kind of the model for what we would hope a studio executive in this town would be in his deep personal commitment to keeping these jobs here in Los Angeles, both for the economic benefit that it has, but also because it's important to the families of the people that he works with. And so I just want to recognize and invite to the microphone Glenn Gaynor.
Thank you. Thank you. It's always an honor to be here. You know, I'm always reminded of how important this industry is. I know the LA Times reported an uptick in tourism, and they interviewed people, and a lot of the people who are visiting this great city say they're excited to see where their favorite TV shows were shot. And thanks to the work here, they can now say they're excited to see where Green Hornet was shot, where currently Spider-Man's going to be shot. So it's very exciting to be part of a great part of our culture, and your enthusiasm in this chamber is helping to keep this dream alive. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. Thank you all. And our next presentation, Mr. Garcia.
Can I have a ten copies, please?
Yeah, Hollywood Reddles. Okay, we'll get everybody through here. All right, John. Okay, good to see you.
Good morning. We'll just... Hey, how you doing? I like the earpiece, you know? I know. Are you working outside?
Down, just down spring. A little...
Excellent. Very good, very good. Good to see you. Thank you so much, and thank you for your patience as well. Come on, everybody out over here. Stand up.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you to our next presentation for their patience while we've been honoring other folks that are here. I'm very proud to be here today with Mother, the movement to help eradicate rape, a tremendous organization that is doing work not just in my district and throughout the city, but throughout this world. But it's headquartered just west of here in historic Filipino town in that neighborhood in my district. Mother was started by an unsung hero, Perla Reyes, who began working to empower women and children in Saudi Arabia. But fortunately for Los Angeles, Perla brought her commitment, her passion, and her energy here to Los Angeles in two thousand and five after working abroad for more than a decade. And to further its mission, Mother offers free self-defense classes to women and children as a first line of defense against imminent danger. In addition to working to stop rape, Mother's also working to fight child abuse and human trafficking, which we know unfortunately remains a reality today as modern-day slavery. As part of its ongoing campaign, Mother has recognized Southern California seniors who have made outstanding contributions towards educating and empowering people of all ages in our communities. And I'm very proud today to join with Mother to honor these seniors who have done that work in our community. They are Silvestre Acosta, Franco Arcebal, Emma Argel, Fred Capimping, Seraphin June Montenegro, Lina Espinoza Navarro, Greci Adorador Onga, and Teresita Conclu Villanueva. Let's give them a great round of applause and thank them for their amazing, amazing work. We have a great community in historic Filipino town that has really embraced Mother as an organization and helped. And I'd like to introduce my longtime friend and somebody who was critical in the creation of historic Filipino town, Romy Borja, who's chair of the project to recognize these outstanding seniors, to say a few words. The microphone is yours.
Narabola, president and council member, Eric Garcia. We are profoundly grateful for this recognition in this wonderful body of leaders in the American community. But I realize that you said you are declaring a Korean Day. I would like to appreciate if you will also call and declare a Seniors' Day in Los Angeles.
Good idea.
By the way, this is a breath of fresh air that we are here, the senior citizens who are underserved, and there are so many senior citizens, not only in Los Angeles, but all over the United States. Now, without further ado, I would say now that I call Narabola and our godfather, Eric Garcia, to present the resolution, and I call on Perla Reyes to accept the resolution.
Well, thank you very much, Romy, and thank you to Mother. The movement to help eradicate rape, as I mentioned, was established here in two thousand and five. Its goal of empowerment has been reached at every age, for every person, women and children, residents alike. It's an incredible job, and the seniors that you honor today, we honor you for having done that. We'd like to present this to you, and we'd love to hear some words from you as well.
I take great honor and pride for this unique privilege. I don't deserve this accolade by myself, but here are my colleagues, those who are able to come and those who are not able to come on their behalf. Thank you so much for recognizing us. And with that renewed mission, with renewed commitment, we'd like to do our share our utmost best, sir, to help the city of Los Angeles. And the mission of Mother, as you may know, is based on the principle that self-defense is an instinct that needs to be developed. We need to teach everybody how to prevent any intentionally inflicted crimes. So this, I'd like to present to you, is a key to safety. It's just a reminder that everybody... It's just a reminder that everybody has that instinctive self-defense. That's one of the tools we use during our Mother Free Self-Defense Clinics. Another program of Mother, sir, is looking after the welfare of the seniors. And again, with my colleagues, the Honcho and leadership of Mr. Borja, um, Ms. Bernice Targa Ganon, we were able to search for ten outstanding seniors. And here's the result of that search. Uh, you will find in this compendium, the inspiring life story of most of the seniors that we want to share for inspiration and for emulation, not only of this generation, but for the generation to come. Thank you very much, sir, once again, and thank you for this, uh, recognition. I thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. Another round of applause for Mother.
Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.[653.32][653.32](Applause) Mr. Rosendahl, he's gonna say something.
In an exciting way, and I'd like to say to my brothers and sisters from the Philippines that your contribution to the United States has been dramatically, uh, well-received. And what I know also is the feedback to the Philippines. The support that you give to communities back in the Philippines is breathtaking. And to the seniors and to the veteran there, I just want to put on my veteran's hat and I want to salute you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations. Our next presentation, CDC's, Mr. Cardenas.[692.13][692.13](Mimicking voice)
Join me over here. It's all about you today. I know you're not used to it. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to remind us that another big economic engine of Los Angeles has been for many, many decades and continues to be, which is aerospace. And one of the biggest names in that community is standing right next to me is Clay Lacy. Clay Lacy's the founder and chief executive of Clay Lacy Aviation, and he's one of the world's most respected and accomplished pilots. His professional career includes serving as airline captain, military aviator, experimental test pilot, air race champion, world record setter, aerial cinematographer, and business aviation pioneer. Clay Lacy was born in nineteen thirty-two in Wichita, Kansas, the birthplace of aviation manufacturing. He piloted his first aircraft at age twelve while working at a local airport in exchange for flying time. Since then, he has spent nearly every day of his life in the air. In nineteen fifty-two, with fifteen hundred hours of flight time under his belt, Clay Lacy joined United Airlines as co-pilot on the DC-3 aircraft. He retired seniority number one in nineteen ninety-two after forty-one and a half years of incident-free flying. In nineteen fifty-three, Clay Lacy joined the California Air National Guard at Van Nuys Airport, where he flew the F-86 fighter jet and became the officer in charge of instrument training. In nineteen sixty-two, Clay Lacy and fellow Air National Guard pilot Jack Conroy made the first test flight of the Pregnant Guppy. Yeah, that's right, it's called the Pregnant Guppy. A Boeing seven thirty, seven, excuse me, a Boeing three seventy-seven Stratocruiser modified to carry the Saturn rocket booster in support of our nation's space program to put a man on the moon. In nineteen sixty-four, Clay Lacy flew the first Learjet into Van Nuys Airport, shaping a new era in corporate air transportation and mobility. He founded Clay Lacy Aviation in nineteen sixty-eight as the first jet charter company on the West Coast. Now he's distinguished as the most experienced operator of private jets in the world.[834.01][834.01](Laughter) There's more. In early nineteen seventies, Clay Lacy helped revolutionize air-to-air cinematography with the Astrovision camera system. He has filmed more than two thousand projects for the military, featuring films, in feature films and television, including nearly every airline commercial ever produced. Clay Lacy holds twenty-nine world speed records, including a thirty-six-hour, fifty-four-minute, fifteen-second around-the-world record in nineteen eighty-eight, flying a Boeing seven forty-seven SP that raised over five hundred and thirty thousand for the children's charities. He is a strong supporter of many philanthropic causes and aviation scholarship programs. Overall, he has flown more than three hundred aircraft types, logged more than fifty thousand flight hours, and accumulated more air miles flying jet aircraft than any other human being on Earth. Clay Lacy has achieved worldwide acclaim for his incredible and lifelong contributions to aviation, including three recent honors which deserve to be recognized. On October twentieth of last year, two thousand and ten, the Federal Aviation Administration presented Clay Lacy with a Wright Brothers Master Pilot Certificate in recognition of his aviation expertise and safe operations for over fifty years. An honor he shared with astronauts Neil Armstrong and Gene Cernan. On October ninth of last year, in two thousand and ten, the Seattle Museum of Flight presented Clay Lacy with a Pathfinder Award for his significant contributions to the aerospace industry. On July seventeenth of last year, in two thousand and ten, Clay Lacy was inducted into the National Aviation Hall of Fame for his legendary achievements as an air pioneer. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we're pleased to recognize and congratulate Clay Lacy for his achievements and contributions as an aviator, innovator, and entrepreneur. We honor him not only for his excellence, but, but for having the courage to dream and the passion to inspire others and the vision to help revolutionize the general aviation, uh, industry. Today, we honor a treasure of Los Angeles, but he is uniquely recognized as perhaps not only a treasure of Los Angeles, perhaps the only man who actually has spent more time above Los Angeles. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, I welcome to say a few words, our treasure and a man of distinction and many accolades, Clay Lacy. But first, I think we're gonna hear from some councilmen.
Mr. Smith and Mr. Alakon.
Thank you very much. And I, I want to go beyond that. I think Clay's achievement in the air unquestioned and certainly impressive and certainly honorable. Uh, but I've known Clay for a very, very long time. Uh, his accomplishments on the ground are extraordinary, too. Uh, he helped the City of Los Angeles in a very important role in defining what LAX ownership of Van Nuys would look like. And I think Clay would be the first to tell you, and, and I would agree with him, that LAX has not done a very good job of running Van Nuys Airport, in our opinion. But Clay has been able to bring focus to that department, to help them decide what they need to do out there, to vision what the airport should look like. And we have a new airport growing out there, tremendous changes going on. Uh, Clay's played a very significant role in that. But also in the support of the community, in support of our police and fire departments has been extraordinary, uh, support of, uh, community activity, the YMCA for many years, a big donor and supporter. Uh, so I just want to thank you for all you've done in the air, but also what you did on the ground in helping Van Nuys become a better airport, making Van Nuys a better community, and supporting all those things that make the community around Van Nuys such an important, uh, uh, factor in, in our life. But also bringing very good focus to the community on the value of that airport, that that airport is a billion-dollar, and you know the exact, and I forgot the number, but over a billion-dollar asset, maybe six billion dollars, is that what it was, Clay? Something like that? Asset to the community around in the way of creation of jobs and creation of, uh, revenue streams to the businesses around the neighborhood there. Um, so you played an important role in not just the air, but in the ground of Los Angeles, how it looks in the, in the valley, and the growth of that airport, and the value of the airport, which is the largest general aviation airport in the world. So thank you, Clay, for what you did up there and what you've done down here.
Mr. Alakon.
Yeah, I too want to, um, follow on, uh, Mr. Smith's comments about the other accomplishments of Mr. Clay Lacy. Um, creating jobs in the San Fernando Valley, good-paying jobs, uh, in, in, uh, areas of high technology and, and, uh, and as, uh, dating back to when I represented Mayor Bradley in nineteen eighty-nine, uh, working with the airport, uh, constant, uh, issues of controversy related to the, the airport, uh, and, uh, and, and working with the community to resolve those issues, uh, Clay had to be front and center. But more important, I, I just wanna, I, I just want to mention that, uh, an unknown footnote. When he broke that record when he flew around the world, uh, you neglected to say that he forgot to drop his passengers off in Japan, uh, because he was so, uh, so, uh, committed to breaking that record. And, uh, they still talk about that today, but, uh, and there's some, some trees in, uh, in Norway, I think, they're complaining about that you might have, uh, cut the tops of, uh, when you flew a little low over there. But, um, uh, Clay has, has really been an anchor at the airport, there's no question. What people don't realize about Van Nuys Airport, and Mr. Cardenas knows very well, is that it is an economic engine for the San Fernando Valley. It is, uh, in the, in the heart of the San Fernando Valley, represents, uh, thousands of jobs and, um, uh, probably billions of dollars of, of interests, uh, that fly in there, uh, regularly. It is the largest, uh, general aviation airport in the country, if not the world. Uh, and, uh, while it doesn't have the stature of LAX, it is just as important in the scheme of things to, uh, particularly the San Fernando Valley. So I want to thank Clay for, for keeping your doors open, for, uh, keeping, uh, good quality jobs in the San Fernando Valley, uh, and for, uh, promoting, uh, all the things that you do. Uh, and I'll never forget, uh, Sam Greenberg's funeral. Uh, I believe that was you in that Learjet that flew straight up. I'm not sure, I know it was your Learjet, I don't know whether you were flying it, but I believe it was you when Sam, uh, passed away and, and, uh, of course, having been a great commissioner for the city. Uh, we want to thank you for all your service and support of the City of Los Angeles as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lacy.
Well, thank you for the kind words. Um, I, I would just like to say that I, uh, came to Los Angeles when I was nineteen years old. I love Los Angeles, it's been good for me. Uh, built a good business here. And just like to remind everyone how important Van Nuys Airport is to the city of Los Angeles. It not only is it the reliever airport for, uh, LAX, but it's the only business airport, uh, in the area. And, uh, there are more jet aircraft based at Van Nuys Airport than any airport in the world, world. And every one of them is associated with business. When they go in and out of here, they're doing something to help the economy, the business of Los Angeles. Uh, either going out to find new business or people coming in that are looking to, uh, locate here or do business in Los Angeles. So, uh, and just a reminder, it's a, uh, a valuable asset to the city that we need to really, uh, uh, take care of, that it survives. Thank you.[1329.11][1329.11](Applause)
Thank you. Tony.
So with that, uh, members and ladies and gentlemen, I want to give this, uh, recognition, uh, to Clay Lacy. He is an entrepreneur, um, an innovator, a philanthropist, and just an all-around high-flying great guy. So congratulations, Clay Lacy.[1349.13][1349.13](Applause)
Congratulations, Clay Lacy. Thank you, Councilman Cardenas. Our next presentation, from CD5. I thought it was Feline Friday, but I guess it's Adopt a Pet Day. Mr. Carets.
Well, here we are on another Feline Friday. This is one of the stranger-looking cats I've had. Actually, I am subbing, you can say something, too, if you aren't. I'm subbing in for, uh, Councilmember Weston, who is, uh, leading a Martin Luther King breakfast, or the end of it as, as we speak. So, uh, this is Wally. He's a two-year-old terrier. He's an absolute sweetheart. He's been licking everybody and playing with them, and obviously well-behaved, even here on a podium in the middle of City Hall. Um, let me get his, his ID number out. Um, and I should say that he is neutered and he is, uh, has his shots and has his chip and everything you would want. Um, his ID number is A1156140. Uh, you can also call, uh, Councilmember Herb Weston's office to, uh, find out more about him. He's two years old and he is as sweet and beautiful a brown-and-black terrier as you could possibly want. Uh, I would adopt him myself if my two cats were not likely to object. So hopefully someone in this room will, uh, grab this wonderful dog or someone out there in the public will call and, uh, and find out about him. You can also call, uh, our West Valley Shelter where he's located. And of course, uh, if you want a dog or a cat, uh, go to or call any of our six wonderful shelters in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we hope that dog gets adopted very well. Our next presentation, Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks. And that colleagues is our final presentation for the day.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Jackie Ryan, her sister Mary Kimbrough, and her brother Alden Kimbrough to come up at this time. Colleagues, we're gonna, uh, highlight, uh, an activity that they've been working on for several years as part of the La Mirque Park Banner Park Project. Uh, it will give the community during the, uh, celebration of Black History Month and Martin Luther King's birthday, a view of many of the important heroes, uh, in the, uh, city of Los Angeles. And these banners will be highlighted, and you can see them on the screen, uh, they will be highlighted in La Mirque Park. The issue of the, uh, this coming Monday, which is, uh, the festival that will have the, uh, eighth annual festival, right after the parade. And they'll show such, uh, leading figures of African-American communities, Tom Bradley, Thurgood Marshall, Nat King Cole, and many others. Let me ask Jackie to come up. And one of the things, if you've not met this family, uh, you have a treat, because they, when you listen to them and the activities of their parents and the whole struggle of human and civil rights, uh, throughout California, it's a remarkable family and a legacy, uh, of a verbal history of how minorities and females have gotten opportunities. So let me ask Jackie at this time to come up.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Parks, and, uh, good afternoon, um, Mr. President and council members. Uh, I am Jackie Ryan, and I am president of the La Mirque Park Village Merchants Association. We've been organized for eighteen years, and, uh, I am standing here with my brother Alden Kimbrough and my sister Mary Kimbrough, and we are the owners of Zambezi Bazaar, a mom-and-pop store in La Mirque Park Village. And La Mirque Park Village, as you may or may not know, is a historic village in the city of Los Angeles. And I want to say that this past holiday season, that our businesses did very well during this, during these economic hard times. And I have to say thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Parks, because we have a fifty-foot Christmas tree there, and our La Mirque Park looks like a beautiful fairyland at night.[1647.23][1647.23](Applause) The La Mirque Park Village Historic Banner Project is ready to be launched. This historic banner project consists of eighty-six banners, three by eight feet, of great historical African-American icons, no longer living, who contributed mightily to the history and culture of the American landscape. We have elected officials, poets, dramatists, musicians, composers, novelists, journalists, historians, SES dancers, singers, civil rights activists, international human rights advocates, sports figures, entrepreneurs, firemen. And we have a wonderful, uh, photograph of the, uh, Los Angeles firefighters circa nineteen thirty-one. We also selected for our policeman, a representative was our fallen hero Randall Simmons. The person selected, a roundly representative of the many who have made such a large contribution and created a better world for all. Most have delivered at least thirty years of service. Many lived and worked in our great city of Los Angeles. Procuring photographs was a time-consuming and lengthy process. Each person is very special, and their images are highly protected by their families and historical institutions. Permission had to be sought to use each and every image. It is therefore a blessing that we are able to grace our community with these historical images to share with the world. I'm not gonna name all of the institutions, but such institutions that we turn to were the New York Public Library, Schaumburg Library in New York, Corbus Images, the Betman Collection, Southern California Research Library, right here in Los Angeles, numerous- Permission had to be sought to use each and every image. It is therefore a blessing that we are able to grace our community with these historical images to share with the world. I'm not going to name all of the institutions, but such institutions that we turn to were the New York Public Library, Schaumburg Library in New York, Corbus Images, the Betmann Collection, Southern California Research Library, right here in Los Angeles, numerous family archives, Kimbrough Family Archives, Hudson Family Archives, the Museum of Natural History in Los Angeles, UCLA Library, Los Angeles Public Library. I would like to thank the city of Los Angeles Board of Public Works, which also graced us with the C-11 Beautification Grant, Congresswoman Maxine Waters, who also graced us with a grant. I would like to thank the Eighth District Council and their staff, Councilman Bernard Parks, who worked with us hand-in-hand the whole step of the way. I would like to thank Deborah Beavers Watford, formerly with the councilperson's office. This has been a four-year process. We had a wonderful designer, his name is Mr. Donovan Blair, his company is A Mediographic, for his unique creativity in interpreting and designing this process with us, for his patience in this lengthy process. Mr. Blair's design was a design that gave us our original inspiration, which we saw at the African-American Museum in Oakland. I would also like to thank the La Merck Park Village Merchants Association Vice Presidents and Team Leaders, Mandala Kaisai and Laura Hendricks, whose many, many hours of tireless work made this project possible. Thank you.
Colleagues, on behalf of the city and particularly the Eighth District, I'd like to present certificates to Mary, to Alden, and to Jackie, and say thank you for this project. And I'd like to ask Mary to come up because you worked on this just for a few minutes and make some comments.
Yes, okay. I'd like to speak briefly on the tradition of Los Angeles street art. I recently went to the museum, the Chinacherry Museum, and I saw this wonderful exhibit of David Sekaros, who was a great humanitarian and muralist, who came to Los Angeles in 1932, and he did this wonderful mural. That was about the beginning of murals, the starting of mural art in Los Angeles. It was called American Tropic, which is thankfully being restored by the great city of Los Angeles. Then there was Judy Baca, who did the Great Wall of Los Angeles and the Flood Control Channel, which is one of Los Angeles' cultural landmarks. And lastly, Noni Olabisi's murals on various sites in Los Angeles, including the William Grant Steel Community Art Center. Street banners and murals help to define our neighborhoods. They welcome visitors, they infuse people with a sense of history, dignity, and beauty. Thank you, Councilman Parks and his staff, for assisting us in this African-American history project. Thank you for contributing to the dynamic and heartfelt street art of the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr.—Miss Perry, but go ahead, Mr. Parks. Miss Perry? Miss Perry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to say congratulations. These banners are a tremendous exhibit and just an opportunity to educate young people who probably don't know enough about Sojourner Truth and people like that, our history, and to remind people who are old enough to know that they have to keep talking and keep teaching. And I think it's a beautiful, beautiful exhibit and a real gift to the city of Los Angeles. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Parks for your willingness to put this all together to share with the rest of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, congratulations. Thank you. That completes our presentations for today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment on items not on council's agenda.
We'll do a general public comment. And Mr. Smith, comment?
Getting ready to do public comments, I guess, guy number five go forthwith.
Five forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And what we're going to do is take the public comment, and then we will go public comment on the other items that are on the agenda and see if that process works. Phyllis Doherty, our first public comment speaker. Phyllis Doherty, good morning.
Good morning, Phyllis Doherty. First of all, I'm here on behalf of Ag, like to thank you on number two for your approval of the contract for landlord outreach, something that's badly needed. We're a dwindling resource for the city and certainly a badly needed one. So we appreciate the fact that you've provided us with a manner of working with the city and our small landlords, having representation. Secondly, I'm here as Director of Animal Issues Movement. I want to bring up an issue that occurred three days before Christmas, and perhaps there's one of the councilmen who claims to be particularly interested in animals that would be willing to help with this. A lady in Echo Park was evicted from her van, a very nice van, a conversion van, this was not a junk vehicle. She had been living for approximately two years, moving the vehicle. She had a dog with her. The dog was in excellent condition. I had made sure that he was neutered, he was licensed, and that he was fed. She had an ample supply of food. When they confiscated her vehicle in the torrential rain three days before Christmas, they put her and the dog on the street, no food, none of her personal belongings, and nowhere to go, no one to call. Four gentlemen took her into a van. When I was called, the dog was loose in the park with my tag on it, and I went down. I realized it was her dog, could not find her. She was lying in the floor of a van that belonged to four men who were at least nice enough to take them in out of the rain. She had no food for the dog, no way to care for herself. And she was obviously mentally very disoriented at that time. I took care of the animal, but I just believe that we do not—as badly as we need to clean our streets, Echo Park certainly were very compassionate. We don't demand that people be put in the street, especially in the rain. And I would hope that one of the councilmen, at least on behalf of not only the dog, but the humans, would talk to the parking enforcement people and say that some things are not necessary to do, and we need to have some compassion, especially during these bad weather conditions.
Thank you. Let's go to the San Fernando Valley. Ronnie Grant. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. I am Ronnie Grant. I am a resident of the old Granada Hills area in the 12th Council District. And I want to share some of my thoughts with the council on the tough budget times we're having and some of the opportunities that I believe the city can really seize in these tough times. While it's really unfortunate the city has to cut services and take a good, hard look at things, there is a hidden opportunity here. There's an opportunity to take a good look at city government and see what the city can do to streamline itself, not just for the cost savings that you have to have for the bottom line, but to improve services to the city and to the residents of the city. And let me illustrate that with two points. First, take a look at Section 1226K of the municipal code. Under 1226K, if a resident wants to appeal an action of building and safety to the planning department related to enforcement of zoning issues or zoning codes, the citizen must first file with the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners, and that commission must have a decision before you can go to the director of planning. That makes a lot of sense when you look at that. But as you research how to make the filing to Building and Safety, in Section 98, you realize that Section 98 says that the Board of Building and Safety Commissioners will not consider an appeal stemming from an action of the department that relates to Chapter One or any other zoning ordinance. Well, that just doesn't make sense. You've got kind of a circular loop. And if you look in Section 98, it actually refers you back to Section 12. Unfortunately, I haven't yet figured out how to resolve this. I'm sure there's a way to resolve it in practice. Unfortunately, when you attempt to file an appeal with Building and Safety, you get referred back and forth between the inspector, or the office, or the board office. Hopefully, the city will seize this opportunity during these tough budget times to streamline itself for all the citizens. Thank you so much.
And Glenn Bailey, in the San Fernando Valley. We'll stay there for two more speakers. Glenn Bailey?
Good morning, council members. Couple of comments, first of all, with regards to operations here at Van Nuys City Hall in terms of the agenda. Apparently, it's been the practice that Council District Six, as a courtesy, provides the agenda for the public. However, today and last Friday, there's been a note on the door of the office for Council District Six saying that they are closed for the day due to furloughs. So therefore, this information has not been provided. Since there's also an office of the mayor, which is how we got the agenda for today, perhaps the arrangements could be changed where the mayor provides the agenda, or the city clerk provides the agenda. Also, it should be posted. Whenever I call, I say, well, it's online, but there's no computers here at Van Nuys City Hall to access it online while the meeting's going on. A couple of suggestions regarding budget savings for your consideration as you prepare for budget deliberations. First of all, the street sweeping for many of our residential areas, that's posted for weekly street sweeping. In my mind, it is a waste of energy and a waste of time. Maybe you get money because you ticket the residents' cars that are parked during the street sweeping time, but for most of these residential areas, they don't need to be swept every single week. You could change the way city of San Francisco has changed, where they sweep only twice a month. Thereby, you could save vehicle expense and staff expense, or deploy those street sweepers to other areas of the city that streets that are not posted and desperately need sweeping at least once a month or more often. So, thank you.
Anchor Patel. That'll be our final Valley speaker. Mr. Cardenas, hold on a second, Anchor Patel. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. President, point of clarification. My office, which is down the hall from where these people are speaking in the Van Nuys Building, has been providing information as a courtesy. I just want to make sure that we understand that we're going to try to make sure that it doesn't happen again, but I just want to make sure that people are clear that it was not an obligation on my office that we were defunct, but it was just a courtesy that we were providing, and therefore, we're going to provide a permanent structure so that when my office is furloughing, as we are continuing to do so, that these people won't run into that problem. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Anchor Patel on the Valley.
Right. None of the city councilmen have any obligations to get any information to the public. Presentations! 11:25, we start public comment. I—you know, these presentations here and there. Glenn Bailey just gave me the note about the furloughs. Yeah, it happens. Last Wednesday, Councilmember Hahn said the city does a crummy job—her word was crummy— running the parking lots. Yep, yep. Councilwoman Hahn, I heard you say crummy. Yes, you said crummy. I'm just repeating it. You do a crummy job of running the parking lots. That's a block of cement, and you do a crummy job running a block of cement? How can we expect you to run a city? Can't run a parking lot. It's a block of cement. It's like four moving parts, an elevator, a bridge that goes up and down, maybe one person who stands the ticket, and you can't even run that! And you're supposed to run a full city. Ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous what goes on in this city. There's going to be a demonstration outside of City Hall on Tuesday in the morning. There's going to be some street theater. We're going to talk about the silencing of dissent and the marginalization of good ideas that people present all the time, issues that we bring light to. Two in a row, actually, right? This issue about agendas, and the gentleman before seemed like he knew what was up with Section 1226 and Section 90 in building and planning, and sending us in circles. Refer to this section, which refers you back to this section. Last Wednesday, I also made a mention of the Los Angeles City Treasurer's Cash Management Report. Check that out. Los Angeles City Treasurer's Cash Management Report. That is where the city funnels hundreds of—actually, it's about $5,800 million into bonds for McDonald's and Coca-Cola. The City Treasurer's Cash Management Report. People, check that out.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Our next speaker is William Leahy. William Leahy here at City Hall. William Leahy? No William Leahy? Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Clyde Williams? No Dr. Clyde Williams? Wayne Spindler? Wayne Spindler?
Yep, just a reminder, an hour and 23 minutes after the meeting started, all of these presentations taking place have caused everybody else waiting on official business of the city to be basically filibustered. Why are you doing this? You're supposed to take the public comment first, and then you're supposed to do the business of the city. That's why it's bankrupt. And then afterwards, you can go down to Beverly Hills, which is a non-city LA venue, and you can have a party, raise funds for your campaigns, and give out those nice presentations. But here, where people have to pay to park, and you've got to pay $15, $16, $20 to park unless you want to walk nine miles and pay $5. So you have a lot of people here today. They want to know what the hell's going on with the city's budget, and why are you selling our parking garages for 50 years for just pennies on the dollar? Why do you do that? I go down to Jerry's Deli in Westwood, you've got to pay $5 before you walk in and spend a dime, the place is three-quarters empty. That's why. That's what you're doing. You're killing business. The parking garages are a very seriously undervalued asset. You're giving away something that's worth billions of dollars over a 50-year period. Go to the San Fernando Valley, 99-year leases that they gave out to farmers. All of that land became worth billions of dollars by the time the leases were over. You don't lease out these type of things in a depression economy as we have now. You have to do that when things are good and you can get top dollar. That's what smart investors are doing. But they're going to come in here, you're going to double and triple parking, gas is going to go up to $5 a gallon, and you're going to close hundreds and hundreds of more businesses with this type of thing. You need to stop it. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks, our next speaker.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You may discuss furloughs sometime in the near future. Here's a suggestion: follow your staff while you make presentations. That would either speed up the presentations or eliminate them. Councilman Garcetti, you start every meeting when you introduce the council chambers and open the chambers up, and you mentioned that meetings are supposed to start at 10 o'clock. Councils need to be in chambers pursuant to council rules, blah, blah, blah. There's a budget crisis. Last year, you mentioned that you wanted the meetings to start exactly at 10 o'clock because you didn't feel it was fair for the council to meet late while the city was going through a budget crisis. Good thing the city doesn't have a budget crisis this year. And then I was thinking, when we had the discussion with your stimulus funding committee meeting, about the RAR fundings and the stimulus funding requirements that are necessary that the city meets in order to spend the money. So think of this in terms of the ratio and the rationale, that the city makes it so difficult to do business with businesspeople that want to act or provide business in the city. Same kind of ratio is what the city gets when it goes to the federal government to get funding for the stimulus and meeting those requirements. So why does the city act to make it so difficult for businesses when they themselves know as representatives how difficult it is to get funding and meet the requirements to qualify for federal money? If you know how difficult that situation is, wouldn't you yourselves as representatives want to say, "We need to make it easier for businesses who want to work in the city to meet our requirements instead of more difficult"?
Matt Dowd, our next speaker. Matt Dowd?
Yes, thank you. Happy New Year, of course, everyone on Channel 35. We're back, unfortunately, or fortunately, however you view us, but we're trying to make it a Happy New Year. In line with what happened in Arizona and President Obama's request, we're toning down—I'm going to tone down the rhetoric at this point because I think we won. I think the judge says just move forward with us now, so I think that's happening, so I'm happy about that. But here's what I want to talk about, really. The budget problems and President Obama. And here's what he can do for the city of Los Angeles. See, I read about how the federal government's spending $90 million or insane sums of money for these fighter jets and sending people to space. I mean, we get it, space is— Space is big. We’re little. We’re never going there. I’m not getting in a spacecraft for 100 years to go travel. I mean, you know, Clay Lacy’s done it all, and I respect that. I’m very happy for him. I wish I could have been up here to shake that guy’s hand. That’s an achievement. But we’ve done all these things, and now we need the money down here, right? I mean, where can all these billions of space exploration dollars and all these fighter jets, and you’ve just got to go to Obama and knock some of this stuff on the head and get the money back down on the ground? And that’s the solution right there. If you cut some space spending for like one year at the federal level, they could alleviate so many of the debt problems at the state and municipal level. So, I call on Eric Garcetti to find out what I just talked about, and go to Obama and get him to do it.
Walter Bechtel.
I didn’t have anything to say, but I didn’t bring a copy of the Constitution with me, so I can’t read off a piece of paper either. So, what am I going to do? But I just wanted to say that, you know, the city is really concerned about people being raped, quote, unquote, except for when the DNA tests get a little bit old or they’re compromised. You know, we just can’t seem to get to that. And one thing the city is never going to get to is the theft of somebody’s intellectual property and things like that. We’re so busy doing something else that we can’t ever get to a situation like that so that we’ve got plenty of time for LAACO to entertain the chief of police and his people over there, but if the LAACO decides to harass somebody who’s a victim of said crime through denying that the guy has paid, made payments on his storage unit, then we certainly aren’t going to bother to try to even talk to LAACO about this thing, even though it’s a federal crime to steal the guy’s payment to the storage unit. Erase the payee’s name and put your own name in it and deposit it in your own bank account. Because this is the LAACO. This is the entertainer of the Los Angeles Police Department, and this is the entertainment industry, the people who are known to be friends with the executive branch of the United States Government because John F. Kennedy’s sister married Peter Lawford, one of the Brat Packs. So, ever since then, we’re not going to get any justice. It doesn’t matter how rotten the situation is or is going to continue to get.
Zumadog?
Yes, the ban has been lifted, and free speech is now kind of somewhat resembling free speech once again. Zumadog! Everything I’m talking about will be at lacitynews.com, and we’re going to be breaking exclusive news about Clark’s Fund. We seem to have found what the money’s been spent on. But first, regarding the entire Zumadog era, it is possible for it to all soon be over. Very soon, City Council will have it in their power. I came in here over Venice Beach over my personal matter. It is about to be hopefully resolved, of which you will have that decision power, and then I’ll be back at the beach, and you’ll never see me again. But that hasn’t happened yet, so Tuesday, March 8th, 2011, important City Council elections. Go to lacitynews.com. Please replace Herb Wesson. Please replace Tony Cardenas. And please replace Jose Wezar for this reason. Clark’s Fund, we’ve heard about it. Amenities fund for fire and police. We have found bell-style corruption within City Council chambers. Used to pay staff of the $1.6 million of Clark’s Fund money, over $1 million was used to pay staff members. Council has $1 million to pay staff. All 15 council districts. So, why is Clark’s Fund money, one council member using it, not for fire, not for police, not for potholes, not for sidewalks, not for tree trimmings, not for graffiti removal, to pay his own staffers? And when we find out where the money’s been spent, now we know what it’s been spent on. When we find out who it’s been given to, I suspect we will find out not only used to pay staffers, but to pay off former staffers. Because when you work for Jose Wezar, there’s a lot to cover up. LaCityNews.com. Vote these turkeys out and reelect Bernard Parks.
John Walsh? John Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. Here’s our analytics. The last week, that’s when we have the story about Veronica Becerra on there. 33,780 visitors in one week to our website. In fact, I want you all, now, there’s a blackout on this story at the LA Times. The Ethics Commission is investigating Zion and Becerra. So, don’t take my word for it. Call the Ethics Commission right now, you 70,000 people. 978-1960. Now, you’re going to get an answering machine. This is the way you ask the question. Will you deny that there is an Ethics Commission investigation of Veronica Becerra and Zion? They will say, “No.” Everybody knows there’s an Ethics Commission investigation because Becerra failed to file for three years her quarterly reports. She wasn’t working for Ron Tudor because Tudor never sent a letter of authorization. This is a gigantic conspiracy, and the LA Times, David Louder, the editor for California, has stopped any stories. I feel like somebody writing a news story in Zurich and then going to Berlin in Nazi Germany, where you’re not going to see the stories in Nazi Germany. Mr. McCosker, the Fire Department, Fire Fighters Union, you heard what he said. A woman was burnt to death on the 1,100 block of Hoover last Friday. Why? Because of the rolling brownout. Smith said, yes, the other day, “The LA Fire Department is in ruins. You are going to burn us to death.”
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Our now-public comment is closed. We are now going to go on the other items. We will take these items, and then we will discuss them. We will hear public comment on the items first. And item number one, Arnold Sacks. Item number one, Arnold Sacks passes. We’re going to two. Phyllis Doherty, number two.
Public chair has been held. We’ve already done all these items. We’re at six.
I’m informed to go to number six. Cards were in the file. Arnold Sacks on number six. Number six, Arnold Sacks.
Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. This is an article in the LA Times, “One Coffee, One Vote,” from 12/21/10. Use of, and this article goes on to say, “Use of, quote, unquote, factual basis.” So, I’m going to ask, because this is regarding a commissioner appointment, a reappointment. So, would he look at use of the factual basis to qualify voters to participate in neighborhood council elections? According to this article, nearly 17% in the last neighborhood council election were qualified voters who qualified under that term. What is a factual basis? That means that if you bought something in a retail store in that neighborhood, you could actually vote for who you wanted to sit on the neighborhood council. Al Abrams, president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, quotes in this article, “The system is being gamed.” Then also, one person has the ability, because of factual basis, to sit on multiple neighborhood councils. That doesn’t seem fair. You’d hope that the city would look into that. You’d hope that this gentleman who’s on, going to sit as the commissioner of Dunn would look into it. You’d hope that the council members would be concerned about it. But I’ll go with the other miracle. Mr. Smith read a book.
Matt Dowd? Item number six.
Yes, thank you. I’ll reset the clock. Channel 35, it’s always good. First of all, I want to thank all the people in the community for supporting me out there on the beach. I always appreciate that. Come out and say they enjoy what I say on TV for the City Council. So, anyway, Bong Won Kim. I don’t see him here, and I think I probably know why. See, if you read the item, it’s the extension of the temporary appointment. I’d hate to be in that spot. You know, you have the, like, the temporary appointment, and instead of just get away, you just give him the permanent one now. Now, he’s getting an extension of the temporary. I would hate that. So, but here’s what I want him to do, is, you know, try and get these neighborhood councils to, you know, get rid of this factionalism that’s in there and, see, a lot of the people who join the neighborhood council that I’ve seen, they have this, they have special interests. They’re total special interests, and I’m not saying they’re all like that. There’s a lot of people in there who are genuine stakeholders, who just want to see good things happen in the community, but they get outvoted, and they get manipulated and maneuvered by the movers and shakers in the neighborhood council. So, there’s a lot of problems there, and I, you know, the major problem is that they’re free. No one’s getting paid, so the quality, there’s not a lot of quality there, and the ones who do have the time to go in there, a lot of them, they just have their own special interests, which are usually financial, and to do with their properties, and, you know, kicking vendors off the beach because, “Oh, my property is losing value because there’s some trash lying on Venice Beach because someone’s marking a spot.” I mean, these are the kind of dumb things we have.
Wayne Spindler? Item number six. Wayne Spindler, number six.
Yes, number six, a temporary appointment. Why not make it a permanent appointment? And everything’s temporary. Temporary general manager of the DWP, temporary interim general manager of every department. And why do we even have the Neighborhood Empowerment Department? I mean, I went to several meetings in different districts. I mean, they can’t vote on anything. They can’t stop anything. They can’t advise or consent to anything. What good is it? They give each of these 90-some organizations like $50,000. They write a check, and then they go in, and then they meet, and then somebody figures out, “I’ll take $5,000. You take $10,000. I take $6,000.” And what it’s being used for is to cement and further the power of the council members in each of the districts. It’s a way to maintain more control. It’s a way to continue to try to get reelected for three terms. It’s useless. Unless they can vote, unless they have veto power, unless the charter is amended to give them real authority, having all of these advisory councils is useless. It’s totally useless. So, this man’s going to volunteer to be a six-month appointment. I mean, I think he should go, and he should tell you, “Thanks. No thanks. This is a waste of time. Stop this thing because the budget’s broke, and return the money back to the Treasury of the council.” I’ll use one minute. Thank you very much.
Zumadog? Number six.
Yes, thank you. We’re talking about the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Boy, department and empowerment, two conflicting terms right there we’re dealing with City Hall. First of all, I say we should pull the plug on this entire department. It’s nothing but a hamster wheel to keep people tied up and feel like they’re getting their money’s worth. But here’s an example from my experience attending these meetings. There’s a cop, Peggy Thusing, and I want council to address this with Mr. Bong Won Kim. I’m invited to attend a Neighborhood Empowerment meeting, of which Peggy Thusing, LAPD cop, is in attendance, to provide information to the public. She sits at the table with the rest of us. She answers questions, provides input, is there for our answers. However, if she doesn’t like what Zumadog is saying or what Matt Dowd is saying, well, she stands up and says, “Oh, by the way, I’m also a cop with a gun and handcuffs in a billy club, and I’m going to throw you out if you don’t shut up.” So, that’s a real problem, when you have a cop that’s participating in a community spirit at the meeting, who appears to be standing up and saying, “I’m going to throw you out if you don’t shut up,” and then when you complain to the sergeant, “Well, a police officer is always a police officer. Well, a police officer has a right if there’s a disturbance.” It sure does appear to be a conflict. It, you know, tell this to the federal judge. “Hey, Judge, I was at the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment meeting, and Peggy Thusing, the cop that was there to participate, didn’t like what I was saying, so she threatened to throw me out, and she threatened to throw Matt Dowd out, and she’s threatening a lot of stuff. Okay, so I would like to see possibly a sergeant of arms that oversees these meetings as well.” Or let the chair who is running the meeting run the meeting. Because when Ms. Peggy Thusing popped up like a little toaster, popped out of the toaster to pop up the toast to shut up, the chair didn’t tell us to be quiet. No one else did. So, she should zip it. Peggy Thusing should zip it and let us do the talking.
John Walsh? John Walsh, our next speaker. Item number six.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org, emailing HollywoodDems, D-E-M-S, at gmail dot com, and twittering at HollywoodDems. We’re all in favor of the commission extending the temporary appointment, but if you disagree with this and you have any problems with the ethics of this gentleman who’s being extended, please, you 80,000 people out here, flood the Ethics Commission with the phone number. Call them up and ask them what they’re doing. And that number is 213-978-1960. Blow their fuse. 978-1960. Thank you.
Let’s go to the San Fernando Valley. Glenn Bailey? San Fernando Valley, Glenn Bailey.
Good morning, council members. I rise in support of the extension of the Bong Won Kim as the interim general manager. I don’t think I’ve ever been to City Council in making such a supportive statement, but I’ve worked with Mr. Kim as a member of Neighborhood Council ever since he was appointed as the assistant general manager, and then when he became the general manager. And my observation is positive in several respects. First of all, he has made himself accessible to neighborhood councils, in particular, the Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. And that’s real important because the various alliances in the West Side, the East LA Harbor, and in the Valley, and others that may form, it’s a way in which many neighborhood councils get together at once and have an opportunity to dialogue with the general manager from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. So, for example, in the San Fernando Valley, there are 33 neighborhood councils, and the Valley Alliance meets every month, and Mr. Kim has been a regular participant in that forum. I believe that Mr. Kim has been, you know, been put into a very difficult situation in very difficult times, and I think there have been some reforms that have been made since the Controller’s Audit was released a year ago. For example, he mandated that every neighborhood council must monthly report all their financial expenditures. It must appear on the agenda, and they must vote to approve them. And that’s been in place since the beginning of May. There have been some others. I don’t have time to describe, but I would urge that approval of this. Thank you.
Anchor Patel? San Fernando Valley, Patel.
Encore Patel, thank you.
Encore Patel, thank you. The neighborhood council system, you know, Matt Dowd talks about how it might be, Jose Aguilar the other day said, he doesn't know if he's spending his time effectively. I also question how effective it is to take a vote, to write a letter, to send to my city councilman, to do a report on this intersection, and then do it all over again for no reason. You know? I agree with Mr. Bailey on some of the accessibility issues that Mr. Kim has done. He's definitely in a difficult position, as are many city workers. But that's what the neighborhood councils are supposed to do. Make the jobs of city workers easier by providing feedback, by telling people what's going on. And here, I think that there needs to be a lot more communication between Dunn, Board of Commissioners, Neighborhood Council Commissioners, and ITA, right? The Information Technology and Agency Department. That, that has to be the way that neighborhood councils can coalesce, can make their input heard. Arminia Chalebian, actually, council candidate for District Twelve, actually got into the newspaper saying that she feels neighborhood councils should have a vote on the city council. They should be the sixteenth vote. Now, I don't know if that's very pragmatic, but that got some coverage. Now, doesn't seem very likely, especially in our current political climate, but I don't see why neighborhood councils can't have some say on the commissioner level. Right? Neighborhood councils have some say on the commissioner level. I think that's very feasible. That makes a lot of sense. It does continue to grow and evolve this love-hate relationship that the neighborhood councils have with the city. Again, the Information Technology Agency needs to, their websites are still garbage. My fourteen-year-old brother puts up stuff better than some of your council websites. That has to be the point of interaction between the ITA and the neighborhood councils, I feel.
Okay, we will take that matter up. We will continue with the public comment. Go to number seven. Number seven, Arnold Sacks, number seven. Now, we're not gonna vote on six. We're going to take public comment on these matters, and then we will take those items following the completion of public comment. So the public will have the opportunity to speak now and not have to wait. So, Mr. Sacks, we're now on number seven. And those who fill out a card, we will hear from you. And Mr. Sacks, you're the first one, number seven.
Yes, thank you. There's been a lot of discussion with the budget talks, and the sale, the city wants to sell parking garages. And this item is a direct sale of surplus property, which means that because it's surplus property, it doesn't have to go out for bids. So you have the parking garages, which are in surplus property, which do have to go out for bids. But recently, there's been some news in the papers regarding AEG, and their unveiling of a stadium proposal. And part of their proposal is to tear down the West Hall of the L.A. Convention Center. So how can they do that? L.A. Convention Center. That's not surplus property, so it had to be, it had to be, I'm just trying to figure out something here, sir. This is, this is not surplus property. It's not surplus property, so it should've gone out for bid. Because how can they tear down the convention center unless they own it? And if they don't own it, how can they be making plans for a stadium?
You need to stay on the target, which is Vista Del Mar Avenue. No, you're not.
This, this target, this item-
We'll get this track at the end of Vista Del Mar. Please direct your comments to that project.
It, it refers to surplus property, sir.
The specific location.
And the fact that it's surplus property, doesn't have to go out for bid. So, and I'm saying, for example, the parking garages aren't surplus property.
Direct it to Vista Del Mar Avenue.
So where does the West Hall of the Convention Center fall?
Direct it to Vista Del Mar.
Not surplus property, or, or it is surplus property.
Vista Del Mar, sir.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Labons for a comment? Mr. Labons, you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. President, members, this is about four hundred square feet of city property that's being sold for eighteen hundred dollars to help clean up what is a property line issue. Thank you very much.
That's item number seven. Thank you. Wayne Spindler, number seven. Limit your comments to this particular item. Number seven.
Yes, online, you can see a, about a hundred-page report about this property, and it's for nineteen hundred dollars. And according to the report, there'd be nobody that would be interested in purchasing this property. Well, good news. I'm here today, and I'm offering two thousand dollars for that parcel of property, and I have the cash here right now. I'll pay two thousand dollars for it. That's a hundred dollars more than is being offered in the report. Because according to the report, nobody would buy that property, and that property is useless. It's an improved property. It is gated. It is paved, improved with a driveway, and there is no easement. And over in Chinatown, nine-zero-zero-one-two zip code, there's a small eight hundred square foot parcel. It's going for forty thousand dollars. It was previously a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So you're gonna tell me a piece of property in the most densely populated areas of Los Angeles is gonna go for nineteen hundred dollars? BS. So the report must've cost the city twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars of man-hours to prepare from fourteen, fifteen different agencies to tell the city of Los Angeles that we're gonna give taxpayer money of nineteen hundred dollars for that four hundred square foot parcel? Crap. So according to the procedures in the charter, I believe, if, if an offer is presented before the vote, and it exceeds the amount of the minimum reserve, which is nineteen hundred dollars, the matter has to go to an auction. And if anybody else here has a bid higher than two thousand dollars, I believe that I'm the winner. And before the meeting ends, I would like to have the deed, and I have the two thousand dollars, and I would appreciate a deed to that property so that I can dispose of it, and I can determine what's in the best interest and the highest and best use of that land. Thank you very much.
John Walsh, number seven.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands dot org. I live across the street from this property, okay? Categorical exemption. In other words, you can't do this under the regular law. You have to pass this by ordinance. This is your first reading of the ordinance. You have to do it twice. This works out to five dollars per square foot. This is approximately five hundred to a thousand feet from Hollywood and Vine. This property is worth more in the two hundred to three hundred dollars. Yes, it is, per square foot. This is a gift by Little Ricky Garcetti to Hollywood Tower. That's the people who are gonna get this property. Four hundred square feet. I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, I bid three thousand dollars. I'm gonna take you away. I'm telling you, you are selling our birthright. What is going on here? Holly, and also, you know, Ethics Commission, two-one-three-nine-seven-eight-nineteen-sixty. Thank you. I can't believe you're giving one comment.
Zuma Dogg, next speaker on item number seven.
So I believe I heard the top bid right now, three thousand. Three thousand, three thousand, I got three thousand dollars and one cent I will pay. It's a very valuable parcel, and here's why. I'm sorry, but you had your chance. Now, now I got the three thousand and one cent. And the point is, this is a very valuable parcel. And thank you for Tom Labons for bringing it to our attention. Nobody was paying attention, and he jumped up and started, and we knew it was shady, and here's why. This little piece of nineteen hundred dollar, now three thousand dollar and one cent piece of property that's four hundred feet, it will unlock two other parcels. It will allow two parcels to come together into one, which allows for all kinds of added density things, or whatever you want to do, and it will allow it to come up to the sidewalk. So I'm here to tell you, at some time, there was a reason why the city planned this way, and now they want to subvert it through a bamboozlement of surplus property. So we are in no position to be selling off surplus property for nineteen hundred dollars when you've just had Zuma Dogg offer three thousand dollars and one cent. That's more money, it's more jobs, it's more services, and it will keep the integrity and character of the community. Because I've never seen anything come good out of this chambers. It's always some little warm and fuzzy little thing that isn't anything, and before you know it, you got Grand Avenue Project popping up in your backyard. And I would like to say, I'm realizing something. This is, I've been coming here almost five years. Yeah, it feels like a decade. It's only almost five years. I see fifteen council members present. So I'd like to mark this day, January fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, of the first time ever, I have had the full city council's attention of fifteen members. And so that's why I'd like to say that with all fifteen members present, I bid three thousand dollars and one cent, and I want the people of city council to know, the reason Labons is bamboozling you is so that he can say, oh, it's a little nineteen hundred dollar thing, council member's no problem, then it can joints two things, and it's bam-bam-boozle.
Matt Dowd, our next speaker on item number seven.
Yes, I get the final bid. Bibbidi-bibbidi-bibbidi-bibbidi, what's the bid, what's the bid, what's the bid? Three thousand and one, three thousand and one, three thousand and one. We got the, 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 the lot. Okay, the lot. And Tom Labons' district, see, everyone wants to do their little auctioneer impersonation. Isn't that cute? But yeah, here's my problem, okay? And, and the, the main thing is the providing for the sale of the property at four-seventy-five per square foot in Los Angeles, wow, that's amazing. Look that up on Google. Where else you can buy land for that? New Orleans, I think. But anyway, without calling for bids. See, and, and then, I don't even care about that, because it's Tom's district, and he can do what he wants in his district. Bill can do what he wants in his district. Jan does what she wants in her district, right? That's how it works. I'm happy with that. As long as it's across the board, and it's all even, I don't even care. What I do care about is if there's a process involved here, which, you know, we're relinquishing surplus property from the city, then I believe other public comment speakers should be able to talk about the process. Because this is the opportunity to talk about this kind of a deal. So if a public comment speaker's talking about the way the city performs its business in this area, then I think it's valid comment. And that's why the city attorney isn't saying anything, not just because it's me. Thank you, though. It's all good. Happy New Year. Peace, love, and blessings. Good luck, Tom Labons and the council district. Thank you.
Philip Tate, our final speaker on item number seven. We will take that item up following the public comments on all the items. Number seven, sir.
Hi, Philip Tate with Shepherd Mall in Rectoron-Hampton for the Purchaser Alliance. I just wanted to clarify a few matters for the record. This is a four hundred square foot remnant parcel. That's the remainder of a parcel that was condemned by the state to build the one-oh-one freeway. It's landlocked on all sides by either property that we own or the one-oh-one freeway. The buildings and all the development is completed on this site. We're vacating the streets so that the developer can repave the street, add street lighting, put in more decorative finishes to beautify the area. This was approved by planning originally in two thousand and six. It was reviewed again in two thousand and eight, twice for modifications to the track map. It's been reviewed by General Services. An independent appraisal was ordered. The appraisal actually came back with a price that was higher than what comparable sales show. Comparable sales for similar remnants is about one-ninety-five a square foot, and I'll provide this to the clerk. This is really just to allow us to beautify the community on our dime. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. We will come back to that item at the appropriate time after we hear from public comment on the other items. We're now gonna go to item number nine. If you hear on item number nine, Arnold Sacks, item number nine. Dr. Williams, item number nine. Dr. Williams, number nine.
Dr. Clyde Williams, four-one-one-Five Bear Road, Elserino Northeast, L.A. The Cornfields Royal Seaco Project. This has been going on, and these funds have been, continued to be expended for almost three years now. This particular project has bounced all over the place, but now, since planning doesn't have any money left, oh, the CRA comes in, and it says here in the document, as a possible redevelopment project. CRA has already, might say, footed the bill for at least two public presentations, et cetera, et cetera. This is going to be a CRA project. So what's the increment for? The past three years of delays on this particular project? Or is it just going to be more of the same? Delay, delay? I don't know. We are still waiting to find out what happened to the scoping documents for this particular project, but these guys are gonna get paid more money, I presume. And the public comments are, how, left and avoid. We don't know what's happening. So it would be nice if, as part of this revenue increase for, that they communicate with those people who have commented on the scoping statement, and might say, why not just sell it off to the CRA? Because that's what's going to happen. Thank you.
Item number nine, continuing, public comment on item number nine, Wayne Spindler.
Million-plus-dollar giveaway for some sort of environmental impact report. Here we go again. Don't we have city employees that do planning, and don't we have a CRA? You look online, there's about two hundred people underneath Christine Essel in the administrative department alone for the CRA. Why, aren't there any city employees that can do these things? I mean, all of these, these, everything has to have an external contract. It's gotta, it's gotta be for all this money, and then later on, you keep amending it. They had a contract with LAPD one time for a set of radios. It was like seven hundred thousand. It wound up going on up to seventy-two million dollars. These, these contracts with these consultants are nothing but a, but just a waste of taxpayer money in a broke city. When a city's bankrupt, the last thing you do is spend money on things like this. What are you gonna do with the, the cornfields? I mean, that thing has been owned by the city. This has been a subject of wide debate for years. They were gonna put a railroad through there. They were gonna build a park through there. They were gonna do all kinds of things. This has been gone over hundreds of times. There's been four or five different proposals, including making it for storage, or making it for housing. At this time in this market, nobody's gonna develop that property right now, especially with Governor Brown, who's gonna shut down the CRA. Thank God for that, when that happens, because they have to get rid of all the CRAs around the state. And so this environmental impact report will be nothing but a waste of time. And if this gets sold for surplus value for the price of nineteen hundred dollars like today in CD four, then the environmental impact report goes to the buyer, the taxpayer loses the money, and we don't get anything back for it. You gotta start voting no on these things. This is not the time to be doing something like this.
John Walsh, item number nine. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. One million successful silver requests last year. I've come to you on the cornfields before. I'm of a, two minds on the cornfield park. In fact, it is almost always deserted. Why is it deserted? Because you built a park for people in an industrial area. Now, how do I know that? I know none of you ever take the Pasadena Blue Line, but it goes right past the park, and I count people. I can count the number of people in the park. Yesterday at four o'clock, when I was going, I was on the train, there were nine people. Now, that doesn't mean that I'm against the cornfield project, because I'm against cancerous development. I'd rather have an empty park there. I'd rather have green space there than have what you would like to have there, which is businesses, strip malls, what have you. So I think that the cornfields, but let's not kid ourselves. It has been a disaster as a park. And I will invite any of you right now to go with me after the meeting and count the number of people up there. And if you wanna know, and it's on our website. What website? HollywoodHighlands dot org. If you wanna email us on this, HollywoodDems, Hollywood and D-E-M-S, dot, at gmail dot com. I think, please, no furloughs for the General Service Officers, and I think the city attorney has done a fantastic job at this meeting.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, item number nine.
I just asked, whose council district is this? Should've known. Wap, wap, wap. Weeza. Weezer. Okay, so here's the problem with this. Okay, first of all, you want to spend, they already had a certain amount they want to spend for this project. And it's only a report to decide whether they're going to do a CRA project, of which the CRA is about to get the plug pulled, so they can't get that done, of which the planning department has been reduced 40%. They can't get stuff done, of which nobody has money to do anything. This thing's never going to get done. And you want to expand the scope of this project. We need to expand the scope. We've already spent half a million. Now we need to spend over a million. And I see that we need to increase the contract amount. And then it is also being funded. So here's the problem, people. The money comes from all these different areas, and then you end up not having enough money to do anything. I thought I had two minutes.
Matt Dowd on number nine. Matt Dowd, number nine. Matt Dowd.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Channel 35 City Council. It's a lot of fun, Matt Dowd. In honor of my previous pledge, like I said, my, the president's ride, my children, our children are watching what we do. So this is another one of those things. I think green, the green thing needs to be put on hold all across the board in the city. But while we, while we repair the budget, because like I said, there's, there's four billion people around the planet pumping greenhouse gases into the environment. So while they're all doing that, we need to get our local house in order and get the vets off the streets and all these things that are way much more important than just greening something or making some little environmental impact, that in a global scale is not a dent in the problem. And I know we have to lead by example and do all these things, but the first thing to do is get the city in order with its budget.
That completes our public comment on item number nine. We are now going to go to public comment at number 12. And once we complete item number 12, we'll come back for discussion and vote with the council members. And item number 12, Arnold Sacks, number 12. Mr. Sacks, you have one minute left on your allotted time.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. So now can I talk about the sale of city assets and how AEG is planning to tear down the West Hall of the Los Angeles Convention Center to build a new stadium without ever having it go out to bid, because it's not surplus property? And how much did they get that property for? I know that you're an open and transparent city council, and I know that that answer will be more than forthcoming from numerous voices. As a matter of fact, I'm surprised Honest Jan Perry hasn't jumped up and said something right now. Another point I'd like to bring up real quick, I was listening to the discussion on Wednesday. The budget director, finance, the head of the budget department, mentioned that the city and the coalition worked together in the last budget. You had $30 million lying on the table. You faced a deficit. What happened to the $30 million pay raise?
Our next speaker on number 12 is Lisa Payne.
I'm sorry, how much time are you giving? Two minutes, thank you. Hi, my name is Lisa Payne. I'm with the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. We are a membership organization of nonprofit developers that build affordable homes, homes affordable to folks making, families making up to about $45,000 a year. And we've also been creating jobs during this recession. In between January '08 and July 2010, we've created 2,300 and 2,839 jobs on the building of the homes and 1,099 jobs in terms of local spending in the economy afterwards. But we can't keep going with this unless we have some planning money. We are looking also at what's going on in the city. We have a whole new transit system. This is a whole new city coming to LA. It's the biggest land use change since the freeways were built. And we've got to do this right. It's a chance where we can build up around the transit. We can attract all kinds of things to the transit. We need, we need market rate housing, but we also need affordable housing. We need to preserve rail control. We need parks. We need hospitals. We need, we need all kinds of things around the transit that people can go to. But it, and it's not going to happen if it's just done project by project and there's not some overall planning for it and some suppression of development away from the transit stations. So it's vital that we keep planning money in the city to really make it live up to the city we want it to be. So thank you.
Julie Butcher. Item number 12.
Let's be clear. LA's workers do a quality job for the people of Los Angeles. And city workers did not break the economy, not in this city and not in this country. Last year, you voted to lay off 361 workers, saving $13 million and contractually triggering raises that cost you $98 million. You've treated our binding collective bargaining agreement like tissue paper, illegally furloughing workers and the services that they provide. To save jobs and services and as an abject act of good faith, LA's unions yesterday voted to increase healthcare costs for every city worker, including all of you. Furloughs and layoffs are bad for city workers and they're bad for the city. We expect you to collect every dime, to let managers manage the city, to cut at the top, to stop hiring cops, at least until the new pension kicks in, to move aggressively on P3, and to act like an employer with vision. The people of Los Angeles expect more service, not less service, and city workers expect you to lead. We're here, ready to face the future with you. Estamos listos. We'd like to be treated like the partners that you like to call us. And we challenge you to sit down with us right now and move on an overall plan that keeps services, keeps the city moving forward, and honors the service and work of your city employees. Thank you.
John Walsh, item number 12. John Walsh, you have one minute on this item.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, yesterday on the Kevin James Show, they pointed out, the vote was taken in there informally. It's 15 to nothing for the parking garages. Why? Because Miguel Santana says so. Well, Miguel Santana says he's not an alcoholic. Miguel Santana, drug.
Mr. Walsh, you're off the subject matter.
I'm telling you, Miguel Santana is not on this, a subject matter.
No, he's not.
He's the one who recommended it.
He's not on the subject matter.
I'm telling you what's going on here. You heard what the firefighter said? The firefighter said that people are burning to death in this city. And you want to furlough everybody up here? Furlough yourself. Put, put a little Vaseline on it and go furlough yourself.
Our next speaker on item number 12, Letitia Andrade. Can I, if you have some folks with you? Go ahead, ma'am. You want interpretation?
Si.
Okay, we'll get you interpreter. All right, go ahead.
Si, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Letitia Andrade. Vengo de ELAF, de la organización ELAF, en Bull Heights.
Good name, my, good morning, my name is Letitia Andrade. I'm here from the organization ELAF in East Los Angeles.
Si, y nosotros nos estamos mirando ahorita afectados por los recortes que ha habido con el departamento de planificación.
We're being affected currently due to the reductions being done in the department, in the planning department.
Porque nuestra comunidad está siendo afectada por la crisis económica.
Because our community is being affected due to the economic crisis we're all facing.
Y hemos trabajado muchos años con la planificación de la comunidad para mejorar nuestra calidad de vida.
We've worked for many years in the planning, in planning and bettering our community.
Y esto nos afecta muchísimo porque viene a dar un paso atrás en nuestra economía en lugar de avanzar.
And these cuts in the planning department are really going to result in us taking a step back in the betterment and the quality of our communities.
Si, teníamos nuestras esperanzas en estos planes de que íbamos a avanzar económicamente y a beneficiarnos todos en la comunidad.
We had great hopes that we were going to advance economically for the betterment, for us and for the community and our families.
Si, solo les pido que tomen en consideración que ya son muchos años nuestro tiempo voluntario y trabajando, planeando todo esto en colaboración con la ciudad y.
Please take them, please take into consideration and bear in mind that we'll be working jointly with a lot of the city staff in the planning department specifically to, for the plans of our community and to better our community. This is going to take us a step back. Thank you.
Thank you. Blanca Espinoza, Blanca Espinoza, item number 12.
Buenos dias. Soy Blanca Espinoza y pertenezco a la organización comunitaria ELAF.
Good morning, my name is Blanca Espinoza, and I belong to the organization ELAF.
Durante muchos años hemos trabajado arduamente con el departamento de planificación.
We've been working very closely and hand in hand with the department, the planning department.
Y hemos hecho muchos análisis en cuanto a lo que sucede en nuestra comunidad, las necesidades que tenemos y cómo nos pueden ayudar.
We've carried out a lot of analysis in our community, our needs and how we can help each other in the community, to better our community.
Y como ya se mencionó antes, hemos avanzado mucho en los proyectos que tenemos.
And as previously mentioned, we have advanced greatly in a lot of the projects that we have going on in the community with the planning department.
Pero si tenemos estos recortes que nos van a perjudicar tanto, en vez de que nuestra comunidad se vea beneficiada, nos vamos a ver más afectados.
But if these cuts do go through, the ones that are being mentioned, instead of moving forward in the quality of the work, in the quality in our community, to better the quality in our community and to continue advancing the work that we've done, instead of helping us, we're going to see more negative effects in the community.
Por eso es que estamos pidiendo esta mañana a nuestra organización, miembros de nuestra comunidad y nosotros.
That's what this morning we're asking you, our community members, members of our organization and all of us here present.
Que tomen en consideración que es muy importante que sigamos avanzando en nuestras comunidades en este proceso.
Please take into consideration that it's very important to continue with this process, to keep moving forward so that we can continue bettering our communities.
Por eso es que les pedimos de la manera más atenta que lo consideren y que sabemos que hay muchos recortes que son muy importantes, pero nosotros somos una prioridad para que sigamos adelante.
That's why we very respectfully, respectfully ask you to please reconsider these cuts. I know that there's a lot of other important priorities, but I feel that we are an important priority and to please keep us moving forward.
Isola Gracián.
So, good morning, everybody. Again, I'm Isola Gracián with East LA Community Corporation. I know there's a lot of important services that we need to sustain, like parks and wrecks in our neighborhoods. And the item that we're here talking about on the planning, our organization has worked a lot with the planning department on the Bull Heights community plan. And overall, I think we have a process that really puts together pieces of development and different issues in our neighborhoods that makes it even harder and more, more challenging for the city to then put it together. So we need to have the monies invested in the planning department, to do really planning, real planning with community residents. So we paint the picture and then those pieces that fit appropriately within the frame to make sure that we have the city that everybody wants. That we've talked about plans, that we've been here before with you around the Paul Alliance and making the city green and having better jobs, that we're really painting the picture that we want to see. And that all those pieces fit appropriately and that we're looking for the right pieces that, that fit that picture in that frame. So we're here to encourage you to make sure that we're sustaining the services that we have, at the same time thinking of the future and painting that, that picture that everybody talks about it of a great Los Angeles that we live in, that we want to continue to have. So please consider not cutting to the planning department and moving forward on the community plans that already are in progress and the ones that are to come. Thank you.
Beth Steckler. Beth Steckler. Number 12, Beth Steckler.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Beth Steckler, and I am working with Move LA. And I've come here today to speak in support of the planning, the long-term planning positions in item 12. We, we are really at a moment with, with 3010 and with the, with Measure R and the $40 billion worth of transit investments that we're going to get over the next 30 years. And if we can get 3010 off the ground, we're going to do it in 10 years. That's a lot of jobs, 160,000 jobs. But we need to get our land use planning around those stations up to par. We cannot expect to create great neighborhoods, to make the city great, to match the great transportation system we're going to have if we don't plan for it. The details matter. So I urge you at this time, please do not cut any further from the long-range planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Roger Leo Flores. I'm a graffiti contractor. I was here at your last meeting, but I wanted to stop by again, just to keep the graffiti program in, fresh in your minds. I'm here to advocate the citywide graffiti program. I had mentioned before that graffiti program cannot survive with a 50% cut. I'd like to show a situation that happened to, to our program last year. We had a situation where three rival gangs were feuding against each other. And we noticed an 80% increase in the graffiti just in that small area. The gang members were vandalizing everything from walls, poles, anything that they could reach, any other, any surface they could reach. And it took over a month to gain control of the area. There, we noticed there was an immediate, immediate negative mood in the, in the area causing residents to fear for their safety. I urge the council to keep this in mind when making their decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Deena Mulverhill, number 12.
Good morning. My name is Deena Mulverhill, and I work for New Directions for Youth. We are a community-based organization that removes graffiti in the San Fernando Valley. I'm here to ask that you save our graffiti removal program. By making the recommended cuts, you will destroy the work the city has done to provide a safe and graffiti, graffiti-free place for the people in Los Angeles. If these cuts go through, you will not only have blith in our streets, but you'll be increasing the safety issues. With these cuts, there will be severe increase in graffiti, and the graffiti will stay up longer, for longer periods of time. With graffiti in our streets, it will, it will lower the property values and add an increase in gang activity, two things the city of Los Angeles cannot have. I urge you to not cut this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd and Zuma Dogg, you're out of time. We will put your cards into the file. That completes public comments on item six, seven, nine, and 12. We are now going to debate on item six. Item six, colleagues. We are now on item number six. Mr. Kikorian, number six.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to ask my colleagues for an eye vote on this matter. Mr. Kim has been a very valued partner in our continuing efforts to try to reduce costs of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment at the same time that we increase efficiency and accountability. And I think that it's important that we maintain that momentum as we go forward in continuing those reforms. So I respectfully ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kikorian. And no one else on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That matter passes. Congratulations, Mr. Kim. Number seven, please. Number seven is now before us. Mr. Labonge, number seven.
As explained by the advocate, this is a 1963 city property that was part of the state freeway system in 1955. It's less than the space between me and the wonderful councilwoman from the 50.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Do you have anyone else on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That matter passes. Now let's go to number Ahora vamos a ir al número nueve. Número nueve, colegas. Mr. Reyes, número nueve, señor.
Gracias, consejo presidente. Colegas, esto no tiene un impacto en el fondo general. Estamos redefiniendo a través del plan específico un área nueva que permitiría que abordemos problemas de congestión, pavimentación y escaleras. Es en realidad uno de los primeros diseños de diseño ambiental para el desarrollo de la comunidad finalmente programado para el Consejo de la Ciudad de los Nuevos Tratos de Arquitectura y Energía de Estados Unidos. Y es esencialmente nuestra habilidad de mirar un entorno construido, crear una salida entre el parque y un nuevo urbano que complementa las estaciones de ferrocarriles. Willa tomar tiempo. Necesita que estemos inclusivos, que traiga a todos los interesados, y le pido un voto en contra.
Gracias, Mr. Reyes. ¿Hay alguien más en la fila? Abra el rollo, cerrar el rollo, tabular el voto.
15 ayes.
El número nueve pasa. Ahora vamos a ir al número 12. El número 12, colegas. Mr. Parks.
Quiero pedirle al Cao y CLA que vengan. Colegas, lo que recomendaría es mantener esto con cierta claridad. Si miran el reporte del comité y el enlace que dice en attachment uno y dos, ese sería un guía para que el Cao haga su presentación. Si también miran el tema 12A, que fue una motion presentada hoy, que amendó el reporte que fue presentado por el comité, creo que obtendrán una sensación real de qué el comité, nos gustaría que lo tomen, qué el comité llegó a judgment y luego qué se recomienda hoy en relación con el 12A. Lo que creemos, basado en algunas discusiones que ocurrieron el miércoles, que el Cao en el 12A eliminó lo que podría considerarse algunos de los problemas más controversiosos, básicamente cubre en el 12A aproximadamente 20 millones de dólares. Pero las dos cosas que creo que son importantes para nosotros es que a partir del 30 de enero, el Cao tendrá un reporte que nos identificará el impacto en los servicios de la ciudad, si hubiera 10 adicionales de furlones. También, ese mismo reporte identificará si un departamento elige no tener los 10 furlones pero puede dar un cambio estructural en su presupuesto de una cantidad similar de dólares. Will mostrará el impacto de esas recomendaciones estructurales. Y luego, terceramente, el reporte identificará si los departamentos pueden encontrar contratos que están en place que podemos eliminar legalmente sin problemas de tributo, cuál es el impacto y luego también no asumir esos servicios por los empleados de la ciudad, cuál es el impacto de esos problemas. El otro tema que creo que es importante es que muy pronto tendremos un reporte hecho por la LADOT, que es la primera vez que hemos tenido una evaluación de los parques, estructuras de parking, los metros y cuál sería un plan de cinco años si usáramos nuestro dinero SPRF para continuar en la actualización de esas instalaciones. Así que es por eso que algunas de estas cosas han sido retiradas porque otros reportes están llegando. Pensamos que es importante que tengan estos otros reportes antes de que tomemos decisiones finales. Pero Miguel, si pudieras comenzar con el enlace del reporte del comité y darle a el consejo algún insight respecto a el enlace uno y dos, cuál era el insight cuando su departamento llegó con estas recomendaciones y luego iremos al reporte amendado.
Gracias, Miguel Santana, Cao. Estamos de acuerdo con la motion presentada por el Sr. Parks en que actúa de forma prudente. Se avanza en la reducción del déficit del año actual por 20 millones de dólares. Y al mismo tiempo, aunque no se cumple los furlones, nos da la oportunidad de reportar de nuevo a todos ustedes sobre el real impacto de esos furlones. Deberían de ser cumplidos y adoptados el 30 de este mes. En adición, lo que nos están pidiendo es tratar de identificar alternativas a esos furlones a través de reducción en contratos y también otras reducciones estructurales, en otras palabras, reducciones continuas que obtendríamos de los departamentos. Así que nuestra comprensión es que en los próximos varios días emitiremos un reporte de vuelta a ustedes específicamente sobre el problema de los furlones. Así que en concurrencia de eso, también estaremos releasing nuestro acuerdo de conveniencia a los operadores privados potenciales y estableciendo un mejor marco en cuanto a su disposición para avanzar en ese acuerdo. Así que el paso antes de ustedes es prudente pero al mismo tiempo no influye en el tipo de alteración tanto en nuestro trabajo como en los servicios que muchos de ustedes y ciertamente la comunidad han raised en preocupación. Creo que la razón por la que es importante avanzar y no adoptar una reducción mínima de 20 millones de dólares en el déficit que estamos enfrentando actualmente es, número uno, todavía no tenemos 100% certeza alrededor del P3. Vamos al mercado, vamos a obtener una mejor comprensión de eso. Y la segunda razón es realmente sort of outlining in the front page of the Wall Street Journal this morning. Y lo que habla es de las dificultades que el mercado municipal de bonos está empezando a pasar y continuará pasando durante el resto de este año. Los tasos de interés subieron para los bonos municipales ayer. Hay un aumento de preocupación de los inversores que este año va a ser particularmente difícil para los gobiernos locales y estados. Así que nuestra capacidad de借, lo que tenemos que hacer incluso durante nuestros buenos años, va a ser cada vez más desafiante. Y así el fondo de reserva se vuelve mucho más crítico. Los inversores miran al fondo de reserva como uno de los instrumentos primarios para determinar la sanidad financiera, la sanidad financiera de una ciudad. Y así nuestro escenario worst-case es que terminemos el año teniendo que eliminar el fondo de reserva. Y así claramente por las noticias en el Wall Street Journal, por vuestras propias políticas para mantener un fondo de reserva al menos 5% del fondo general, avanzando con la reducción de 20 millones de dólares del déficit, irá un largo camino en minimizando esa amenaza.
Miguel, ¿puedes explicar al consejo, ¿empezamos en julio 1 con un presupuesto balanceado?
Sí, lo hiciste. Empezaste en julio 1 con un presupuesto balanceado y en ese presupuesto incluía 53 millones de dólares que vendrían como resultado de una long-term lease para nuestros garajes.
Y luego, ¿puedes explicarnos en el FSR uno y dos y los reportes operativos, cuánto del déficit habéis already cerrado?
La única parte restante del déficit fuera del parte relacionado con el P3 es aproximadamente 9 a 10 millones de dólares. Llegaron de noticias que obtuvimos acerca del Departamento de Policía al final del último año calendario.
¿Cuál fue la cantidad del déficit que habéis already cerrado?
Cerramos cerca de medio millón de dólares.
Medio millón?
Empezamos el año, si recuerdan, cuando estábamos mirando el presupuesto el año pasado, empezamos el año con un déficit de 485 millones de dólares.
Así que hemos cerrado eso, además de esto, antes de este reporte, solo teníamos como 9 millones de dólares deuda en ese déficit antes de este reporte que completaste hoy.
Correcto. Eso es correcto.
Okay. El otro problema es que cuando miramos estos reportes hoy, nuestra expectativa es que cumpliremos nuestras proyecciones financieras y no tendremos más excesivo desperdicio para que este reporte hoy sea exacto.
Eso es correcto. Ese es un punto importante. Su consejo ha adoptado planes operativos que resultaron en la eliminación del déficit. Saben, obviamente monitoreamos la implementación de esos planes y así estamos suponiendo aquí que cada departamento se queda dentro de su presupuesto. También suponemos que las proyecciones de ingresos se mantienen en camino. Y es lamentable que hasta ahora hayan llegado al mercado en términos de nuestras proyecciones. Pero la mayoría de nuestro ingreso en realidad viene en la mitad posterior del año. Y así sigue existiendo alguna preocupación por ser capaz de alcanzar los objetivos que establecimos para el ingreso.
Okay. Y así si tomamos acción en el reporte amendado hoy, todavía tendríamos aproximadamente 32 millones de dólares que no hemos contado. Y luego cualquier escasez de ingresos o excesivo desperdicio solo añadiría a ese número.
Eso es correcto.
Okay. Así que colegas, mirando esto y con suerte y pasando por ello, verán que lo que tratamos de hacer es abordar al menos 20 millones de dólares de cortes pero también dio a Miguel más oportunidad para que traiga a ustedes algún fondo de fondo sobre los problemas más controversiosos. Los dos reportes, como mencioné, que se van a ir adelante son las recomendaciones de instrucción número uno, que va a ser un reporte masivo y un punto de decisión importante para todos nosotros. El segundo reporte que está llegando en ese mismo intervalo será el revisión de cinco años del ingreso especial de parques y lidiando con nuestras estructuras existentes y metros que os dará una indicación por primera vez de un plan de cinco años. Y así nuestra recomendación es que avanzemos en el reporte amendado. Tomemos los 20 millones, reduzcamos el déficit a 32 millones, regresemos antes de enero con algunas decisiones difíciles sobre furlones, cortes, contratos. Entiendan exactamente qué está en el SPRF a largo plazo antes de que saquemos dinero de él y vean cuál es el plan. Como saben, estamos pasando por 10,000 nuevos metros en la calle. Muchos de esos metros están entrando a cerca del 50% más de ingreso que antes. Ahora vamos a ir por otros 10,000 metros y luego un programa especial en la ciudad, que es de alrededor de 7,000 metros. Así que cuando todo eso esté hecho, tendrán aproximadamente 30,000 metros de los 40,000 metros de la ciudad que se convertirá en el nuevo tarjeta de crédito y cosas de ese tipo. Y de esa manera, y esto no cuenta con nuevos lugares donde los metros pueden ir. Así que estas son todas las cosas que están avanzando y pedimos que se avance en el movimiento amendado entendiendo que cualquier cambio que se mueva aquí solo saldrá de un déficit en algún otro lugar. Si lo movemos de un departamento a otro, solo tenemos que volver al siguiente reporte y decir que esta movida de Rec y Parque ha creado un déficit en servicios de calle o saneamiento. No va a ir a ningún lugar, solo va a crearlo en algún otro lugar. Y así pedimos que miren esto, tomen los 20 millones, estén preparados antes del 30 para lidiar con el fondo especial de ingresos de parques y el reporte de lidiando con los descuentos y furlones y cortes y luego ser capaces de lidiar con un número mucho menor y mantener los dedos cruzados de que el ingreso entra como proyectado durante los próximos varios meses. A partir de abril, obtendremos una sensación real de qué el impuesto de negocios, aproximadamente 400 millones de dólares al mínimo, entra. Sabremos por abril cuál es el número proyectado. Tendremos una mejor sensación de nuestro impuesto de bienes terrestres, cosas de ese tipo. Así que obtendrán una mejor sensación en el primer trimestre de este año de dónde estamos y cuándo vamos a estar en agenda. Así que eso es lo que recomendaría, que avanzemos en el reporte amendado y permitamos que avance y limpie los otros problemas entre ahora y el 30.
Gracias, Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks, ¿era una motion?
Sí.
¿Necesito un segundo en eso? Está circulando. All right, great. 12A, gracias. All right, Mr. Verstetti.
12A. Muchas gracias, Sr. Parks, y gracias por 12A. Y creo que casi todo de lo que estoy de acuerdo, tal vez todo de lo que estoy de acuerdo, pero lo más importante refleja mis prioridades también en un par de áreas. No creo que deberíamos estar cortando nuestro graffiti, nuestro financiamiento anti-grafiti. Creo que eso es realmente crítico y en ciertos barrios ha sido, ya saben, el caso central en la teoría de la ventana rota, no tener eso adelante. Esperamos a un par de otras cosas. Pero esto va a ser un paso de dos, amigos. Esta es la primera pieza y tenemos una segunda llegando. La segunda es la pieza más difícil y eso dependerá de un número de factores diferentes, dónde estamos con nuestros ingresos, que no parecen particularmente buenos, dónde estamos con el avance en el acuerdo de P3 y eso todavía tiene muchos desconocidos. Así que esta parte es la más fácil, tan dolorosa como es, porque esto es ciertamente no fácil en absoluto. Tengo un par de preguntas específicas sobre un par de cosas antes de Mr. Parks, sobre el motion de Sr. Parks. Uno, el corte de la ITA, los fondos auditivos de la TDA y ITA han absorbido el déficit restante de 734,000 a través de trastornos. En algunas discusiones que tuvimos con la ITA, no sé si la ITA está aquí para hablar de eso en absoluto. No sé si hay alguien aquí sobre eso. Así que sí, creo que necesitamos entender qué hace eso. Todos estos tienen un impacto sobre el servicio, así que sé que podríamos tener a todos por ahí y decir que había un problema con cada uno de estos, pero cuando lo miramos pensamos que podría necesitar un poco más de una corte. Sí, Sr. Parks, ¿querías hablar de eso?
Por un reporte.
Sí.
Prometimos, Sr. Wilton Dog, durante el proceso de presupuesto, que regresaríamos al consejo con nuestro presupuesto de acceso público. Eso estará en un comité con el fiscalía, el financiero y muy pronto, tal vez incluso la próxima semana, para darte cuál es esa visión para que sepas qué. En acceso público, les hemos dado una definición más allá de lo que hace la ITA, pero todos nuestros accesos públicos, incluso aquel que está dentro del oficio de la policía, debería ser parte de esos fondos que vienen a la ciudad. Y les damos un presupuesto que pueden trabajar sobre el tiempo en lugar de darte el dinero y tomarlo y jugar el juego de 60-40, en el que nunca consiguen el 40. Así que ese es otro reporte que está llegando antes del 30.
Okay. Gracias. ¿Quieres hablar de eso o estabas sentado?
That's right.
Okay. Vamos a ver si podemos entrarlos aquí. En segundo lugar, en mirar el SPRF, quiero decir, inicialmente cuando estaba pensando en cómo mitigar algunos de estos, estaba diciendo, bueno, ¿por qué no podemos avanzar en algunos de los SPRF ahora, 3 millones de ellos? ¿Es el caso más claro porque el SPRF, potencialmente el fondo especial de ingresos de parques es siendo usado para invertir en nuestra infraestructura de parking actual y obtener mayor valor de ello para que tengamos más parques de parking actualizados, etcétera? Y si gastamos todo eso ahora mismo que está ahí, podríamos no poder cumplirlo. ¿Es ese el mejor caso en contra de secar eso ahora mismo o deberíamos secar más de eso? Your answer. Whoever. Sharon, CLA's office.
Sí, la usanza del fondo especial de ingresos de parques, por supuesto, es una decisión de la comisión. Con respecto a lo que ha pasado con el fondo especial de ingresos de parques a lo largo del curso de los últimos años en intentar equilibrar el presupuesto, han habido extensos transferencias para apoyar el resto del fondo general de la ciudad y pagar otros costos relacionados, ya saben, relacionados con el fondo especial de ingresos de parques. Así que lo que ha sido reducido como resultado de eso es la mantenimiento relacionado con la infraestructura para el fondo especial de ingresos de parques.
¿Es esto más dinero de mantenimiento que dinero de inversión en cambio?
Puede ser dinero de inversión, puede ser mantenimiento, puede ser operacional, puede ser mejora, puede ser cualquiera de esas cosas.
Entiendo eso. Creo que lo que me pregunto es, ¿cuál es este dinero? ¿Qué dice el Departamento de Transporte esto dinero ahora mismo? No quiero hacer algo que lo quiten. Cambiamos un montón de parques específicamente y la nueva tecnología ha resultado en más dinero. No quiero secar esto si de repente alguien dice, oh, la única razón por la que este año no estás ganando 10 millones más en nuestros metros es porque secaste eso temprano. Pero en cambio, parece que, entiendo que es mantenimiento deferido. Estamos haciendo eso, sin embargo, en muchos aspectos diferentes y si es la diferencia entre furlones y servicios corrientes, eso podría ser una decisión que necesitamos tomar y yo apoyaría eso. Solo necesito alguien que realmente esté trabajando en esto para articular qué es el dinero específico que se planea hacer. Sé que hay un reporte que está llegando, pero ¿es eso supuestamente hacernos más dinero si no gastamos más dinero?
Bueno, tal vez esté equivocada, pero creo que los 3 millones de dólares que estás refiriendo al fondo especial de ingresos de parques en realidad no están en esta lista en este momento.
No, sé, lo pondría en, eso es lo que estoy preguntando. ¿Por qué no lo hacemos?
Bueno, hay, la razón por la que es porque queríamos que este reporte regresara a ustedes con respecto a cómo se puede gastar el dinero. Una de las cosas que podría pasar es, podría hacerte más dinero. Podría ser para mejoras que generaría, como por ejemplo, con respecto a mejorar el número de metros, los tipos de metros. Como recuerdan, la comisión recientemente adoptó cambiando aproximadamente 40,000 metros, creo que fue, y teniendo el nuevo tipo de tecnología, que en realidad ha resultado en algunos ingresos adicionales, menos falla en los metros, menos intensivos costos operativos. Así que sí, esos fondos podrían potencialmente ser usados para mejorar.
Y aprecio que digas eso en el sentido público. Sé que pueden ser, estoy tratando de averiguar, ¿van a ser? Porque en cambio creo que es dinero apropiado para ponerlo también en marcha. Así que no sé si el Cao sabe eso.
Bueno, y la razón, y es porque ese reporte está planeando que lo pongamos en fase dos para que...
¿Y tu equipo está trabajando con el Cao específicamente para asegurarse? Quiero decir, sé que hay otras buenas cosas que podemos hacer con eso y algunos piensan filosóficamente que deberíamos estar poniendo en mantenimiento incluso en un año como este sobre algunos otros cortes que necesitaríamos hacer. Pero ¿estás trabajando para asegurarse? Porque para mí el nivel de threshold es, si no vamos a, si no voy a poner en la mesa hoy, es asegurarse de que vuelve de alguna manera que haga más dinero para forzar otros cortes.
Y creo que es por eso que la mayor discusión política necesita ser tomada en términos de cómo investir esos dólares y comenzar a crear una forma de traer alguna predictividad a cualquier sobrepaso que exista a una base anual. Ahora está siendo tratado anualmente. Debemos también notar que si se mueve ese tema de fase uno a fase dos... from Phase One to Phase Two, and currently the ordinance that has been adopted by council makes it a loan and not an actual contribution towards the general fund. So that would be part of what would need to be discussed as well.
And we've been doing that each year. We've been making, we've been changing some of the loan.
No, the loan provision is something that's new that was adopted this year.
Right, right. See if there's any other, other piece on this. So I don't know if we can before, I think that the only things that jump out at me, colleagues, that I'd want to know some of the impact is obviously the Wreckin' Parks, the $1.8 million. That's a pretty devastated department. We have, all of these are devastated departments. So it's going to be choosing between things. But I'd want to know what is our service impact there? The reduction, the funding on mayor and council, where is that specifically looking to be coming from? And then the city attorney to describe what the impact of absorbing the 1.0 million. I agree with, at least on the outset, the 13 or 14 million of this. But those are the only ones that I might look at other places and other sources. But, and I don't know if you all can answer it because you're not necessarily those departments. But I think it's something this council said loud and clear. Tell us what we're actually doing before we do it. Because then afterwards, it's like, oh, we didn't know we were doing that. And so I think it would, both with the ITA thing, with the city attorney, with the Wreckin' Parks pieces, to know what those service impacts are. And then lastly, you know, why we shouldn't put other monies in place. Because I don't want to walk away without 20 million back into the budget today. I just think there may be other options of how to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Zein?
That was me pressing the button.
All right, why don't we, I'm sorry, that's, yeah.
That was me.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. So looking at 12A, I'm assuming that if any actions taken today, we're not going to be taking action on the report that was before us. But we'd be looking, which talks about 50, over $52 million in reductions. We're now, at best, going to tackle a 20-plus million dollar reduction today. So I'll speak to that, the amendment, or, yes, the amendment. So when it comes to transferring audit monies from TDA, ITA to absorb the remaining deficit of the $734,000 through attrition, can you explain for us exactly how that impacts that department?
It's my understanding that those are dollars that were not budgeted. These are dollars that came that are one-time on top of what their budget has.
Okay. So on that note, we're assuming that it will have negligible effects on their operation, not so much a direct feeling of $900,000 in the last few months of the fiscal year. That is correct. Just about a month ago, an operational plan was adopted by your council. It did leave this remaining $700-plus thousand remaining. Through, we believe through attrition or even with them at this point remaining as is with staffing, that they'll be able to absorb this remaining amount to the end of the year. Thank you. I'm glad that we're going to give ourselves an opportunity to understand the impacts of the, of the rest of the cuts as well, the other 30 million that unfortunately we're going to have to take some sort of action on. Hopefully, in the next few weeks, we will take some, some action. But one of them was the graffiti removal. I just want to make it very clear once again. On my side of the city, the Sixth Council District, graffiti removal is an integral part of fighting crime. It's an integral part of reducing crime. It's an integral part of public safety. And in addition to that, especially in light of what happened in Tucson, Arizona recently, when there was an attack on a public official and many, many other individuals were injured and/or killed because of that attack on an elected official. When it comes to our GSD officers, personally, I think it's fair to say that they are not only an integral part of public safety, but they are in fact sworn officers and they are in fact doing a responsibility and a duty that really we should not be reducing. So affecting them by additional, by 10 furlough days, I think is inconsistent with the mantra and the, the funding that has been going on in the last few years with this city, emanating from the mayor's office and his promise when he ran for, to become mayor. And then also making its way into the budget process, where we're holding harmless the police officer, the number of sworn police officers, and they're not being furloughed, and us keeping the number of officers as high as possible. Yet at the same time, we're treating our GSD officers categorically different. I think that that's a policy matter, not a budget matter, that we should discuss, colleagues. Should we reduce our GSD force? Does that make policy sense? Obviously, it's a budget line item consideration, but I think that's a policy decision as well. I'll push my button again because I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you. As Mr. Garcetti said, this seems to be a little less painful. But I still notice on two of these items, which were in the original initiative, that having recreation and parks reimburse the general fund for refuse service, the department may need to implement furloughs to absorb this cost increase. And under the, reducing the reimbursement funding for EAA furloughs by 50%, we're instructing the departments to absorb this reduction by suspending hiring, foregoing purchases, or laying off employees. So I guess for me, on both of those items, if, you know, before we, you know, permanently vote for this, like both of those answered from the departments, or maybe putting a friendly amendment in there that clearly on the one where we're giving, you know, they're absorbing it and we're giving them choices of how to absorb it, that we obviously put laying off as the last choice. Certainly, I'd rather them forego purchasing or suspend hiring. And I'm sure they know that, but I would like that to be a specific direction.
We're establishing it as the last alternative.
Yeah, right. And then again, just in your report back, you know, like to know for sure on recreation and parks, how they would be absorbing. And again, it seems like we're taking it from one department and putting it in the other. And how is that going to affect, on the recreation parks, reimbursing the general fund for refuse service? So is that going to mean?
The way, the way it works, it's, the general fund actually pays for that. It's not, it's not sanitation.
It's not sanitation.
Right. So the, the general fund is, it makes that contribution on an annual basis. I mean, the, I think what Mr. Parks's motion does is, is reduces the amount that was being recommended for Wreckin' Parks in our original report. Our original report had both the 1.8 and an additional 1 million. And his motion reduces it only down to the 1.8.
Could we get a report back on what that means to the department in terms of furloughs? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Perez?
Yeah, just a few questions and comments. The first is, Mr. Parks's motion, as I understand it, is informational only. We're not committing right now to take an action that cuts $20 million. We're committing to get information on what the furloughs would look like or layoffs would look like and alternatives that may be achieved in cuts to contracts. Is that correct or is that not correct?
That is not my understanding. My understanding is you have well over a $50 million deficit. And Mr. Parks's motion reduces that deficit by 20 million. The report back is on the remainder, in which furloughs are included. And, you know, if graffiti, for example, is not going to be one of the options, then our office has to identify an alternative to that. So for 30 million of the 50, we're, you're deferring that and directing us to come back and report. But Mr. Parks's motion does reduce the deficit by 20 million.
And just to add to that, the original report had a $20 million figure that would be associated with furloughs if they were, if additional furloughs were taken. So that 20 million would be part of the report back that would come at the end of January. It just happens to be the same number.
Now, in Budget and Finance, we discussed taking a significant look at contracts first as an option. And certainly, my preference would be, before we take an action like this, to look at all the city contracts and look at whether, I know about, really about 8 million of this is cuts, I believe, and about 12 million is acknowledging money that we've achieved in savings. I'd rather see before we approve the 8 million dollars in cuts, some of which I think are actually pretty counterproductive, like the graffiti cut, that we look at all of our contracts in context and see if we can come back with recommendations of 8 million dollars worth of contracts that we could reduce.
And this motion does that for the 30 million. Graffiti contract is not in the menu of reductions in the 20 million that Mr. Parks is, has before you.
Right. Well, I was using that as an example. But, but there are other elements that I wouldn't necessarily be able to go for. And I would certainly rather us look at the contracts first rather than looking at whacking our employees that have already been furloughed and furloughed and laid off and face the possibility of higher and lower options over and over in the year and a half that I've been there.
And that's what...
So I would not vote for this motion. And I would certainly ask that we come back and look at contracts first and hammering our employees yet again as a secondary choice.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. It's Mr. Alarcon.
Council members, my comments are very much in line with Mr. Garcetti's. I too cannot vote for this motion as a whole because I don't think it is correct for us to authorize layoffs with not, without knowing exactly where those layoffs are going to occur. Because I don't think the public should be treated as if they are out of this equation. And if we want to have transparency in this, the public needs to know who exactly we are laying off so that they can testify to us as to what they think about those cuts. By giving a carte blanche to cut wherever you think in any one of these departments, city clerk, comptroller, cultural affairs, emergency management, general services, police, and transportation. The headline, if we pass this motion, by the way, folks, the headline tomorrow is going to say, "Council authorizes cuts, layoffs in police department." Is that, is that, is that what you want the headline to read? But that's what it's going to read, because that's exactly what you're going to be voting on. We won't know how many. We won't know what units. We won't know where these cuts are going to go. So having said that, let me also say, are we going to vote for each one of these items individually? Because some of these things, I can vote for today without further information. But on the three that were mentioned by Mr. Garcetti, at a minimum, I think we should hold those off until we get more information. Secondly, I had a motion introduced in December to take a look at the staff assistant position in the fire department. The CIO has already said that that position, at one time, they even recommended that we cut it. At one point, they, they said that that was a $13.6 million budget item. In another report, it was a $10.6 million item. We, Mr. Parks, you committed to getting that report back to us in early January. It is now mid-January. Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks? Mr. Parks, I'm talking about the staff assistant report. Back in December, I introduced that motion. You committed to get that back to us in early January. We haven't seen that report. It's a $10 million plus item, could save a lot of these, these, these actions. And what happened to that? So before I'm ready to, to vote for support of all of these actions, I want to know where the report is on the staff assistants. And also, I don't mind, I would vote for getting a report back on the impacts on those three items, the three that Mr. Garcetti mentioned. I would even vote for some of the cuts that you proposed. In fact, most of them, not proportionally, but, but most of them by number. But I can't vote for giving authority for layoffs when the public hasn't had a chance to know who those layoffs, where those layoffs are going.
You're not giving the authority for layoffs.
Pardon me?
You're not giving the authority for layoffs.
Yes, we do. That's what it says.
Okay, let's have, let's have a clarification on that so that this, this is not left hanging out there.
That's the one. They're asking for a report back before the 30th on the critical issue of layoffs, furloughs, and contracts.
Look at number three, where it says, implement Phase One reductions. And then when you look at this, it says...
Number three says...
Directing departments to absorb this reduction.
Mr. Parks, can you come closer to the mic?
The reductions are on the back of the amended motion.
Mr. Parks, come closer to your microphone.
It includes layoffs.
Yeah, I'm saying, look at the back page, the back page of the amended motion. That's now Phase One. It's not the Phase One on the...
I know, and that's where it says layoffs.
Where does it say layoffs?
Right there, where it says, reduce reimbursement funding. If you look at the last three words, it says, lay off employees. I just... You're always not close.
Okay, then strike that last sentence.
All right, Mr. Parks, just for the record, wait a minute, hold on a second, please.
That, that was not intended.
Okay. All right, wait, wait, wait. Can we, just for the record, so that we can hear? There's too much back and forth.
That sentence was not intended.
Mr. Parks, please read, read into the record the sentences that you want stricken from this motion.
Miguel, on that sentence dealing with reduced reimbursements?
Yes.
Now, what, would you strike the phrase, directing departments to absorb this reduction by funding or suspending hiring, foregoing purchases, and strike the last phrase, or laying off employees?
That's the last.
Got it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Not me.
Well, colleagues, as I listened to this discussion, and I was looking at the calendar, there were, I mean, there are some concerns about how these actions impact. I know we need to make these hard decisions. We should be making informed decisions. So the scrutiny we're giving each phrase, each sentence is critical. So we do have an adjustment on eliminating that one phrase, laying off employees. But we also have, for example, on the questions of impact on Wreckin' Parks, I think we should understand what that's going to mean. My recommendation is going to be, and to keep it consistent with our timing and our calendar, is we would consider looking at this and voting on this on the 21st so that we could make informed decisions. We can ask our questions of the CIO, the CLA, and the various departments, departments being impacted. In terms of the city attorney, are we going to be reducing functions that generate revenue for the city? I'm not sure if we know that yet. When we look at CIEP savings, which projects are completed? I don't know that yet at this point. We have to make these decisions, I understand it. But if we can move this to the 21st to allow us time to absorb and ask these questions and still stay on track for the 30th, gives us a little bit more weight of confidence in our decision-making. But I do have those two questions on the table. Do we know the list of CIEP projects that have been completed?
This is surplus dollars from projects that have already been completed. These are one-time surplus dollars that were earmarked for a specific project that normally would have gone to pay down the debt service for those projects. And then the second call would have gone to have it go to the reserve. We're now saying having to go to mitigate.
So having a list should be easy to get.
Well, actually, the, the list is available. On the 10 million figure, those are savings from the police administration building, the motor transport and IESO garage. And then the 2 million number of variety of different, variety of different things, usually small, smaller figures.
Now, when it comes to the functions that could be eliminated from the city attorney's office or others, are they going to be functions that are revenue generating? Do we know that?
Let's be clear what that, what the city attorney portion is. The city attorney has done a good job, as good of a job as he can, to reduce costs in his department. He has stopped hiring altogether in his department and has implemented furloughs. Even with that, his department is currently $4 million short. One of the, in the operational plan that you adopted, you made his budget whole. We're now recommending that instead of making it whole by $4 million, you make it... whole by $3 million. We're not proposing a reduction beyond what was already in his budget. He hasn't been able to meet his budget 100%, and so, we're saying, instead of subsidizing it by $4 million, we subsidize it by $3 million.
Okay, and the last question on the furloughs for the Department of Wreckin' Parks, what areas will be targeted for furloughs? What—she'll block it, and functionally. Do we have an insight to that?
No, not specific insight. The department would have to provide you a more specific report on how they would apply furloughs. If you recall, that's a department where furloughs have been exempt. So, both Wreckin' Park and the library system do not have furloughs today. So, you know, they—what we've been—was shared with us is, in order to meet this hole—and keep in mind that furloughs was in response to both the 1.8 and the additional 1 million—that they would have to now start furloughing their employees.
Colleagues, all I'm asking is, it's a friendly amendment, if we could take action—not today, we could do it either this coming Wednesday or next Friday, but it gives us time to digest what we're doing. On the ITA piece, we saw what happened, because the one employee who could not—I mean, overwhelmed the employee, there was complications with our infrastructure, and all of our systems went down. That meant thousands and thousands of dollars of staff time sitting idle, affecting almost every department in the city. So, I think we should be cognizant of those types of impacts. So, that's a friendly amendment.
We have a second by Mr. Cardenas? Okay, thank you. Mr. Huizar.
Thank you, Madam President. In Budget and Finance, I requested that we look at all our stimulus dollar projects, and given the recent report by the comptroller's office that we've only expended about 25% of those dollars, to see if, in fact, those projects that were identified—if, number one, we can use some of that money for our general fund to save jobs, to keep people off furloughs. And like I mentioned, LUSD saved a number of teachers' jobs using their stimulus dollars. And secondly, given the way these public projects work, I mean, these capital improvement projects work, some of them get delayed, some of them may not be as shovel-ready as we anticipated, so there may be some dollars there. That is being reviewed, correct?
That is correct, and that was going to be part of the analysis to help mitigate the other $30 million that you're not acting on today.
Okay, great. Thank you. And secondly, on this one item, instruct Recreation and Parks to reimburse the general fund for refuse services. Other departments, do we ask them to do the same, or are we seemingly now Wreckin' Parks?
Yes, there are other departments that reimburse the general fund, or actually, sanitation, convendence center. We look at the harbor, the airports, DDP, they do reimburse sanitation for those services. This is—right now, these are city costs that the general fund has to pick up, and so, now we're asking them to take a look at reimbursing the—really, the solid waste fund for those services. And this would be, then, a general fund cost avoidance.
Other departments?
That harbor does it, the airport does it, convendence center, DDP, yes. They do—
They're reimbursing. Harbor, these are proprietary departments, don't do with the general fund, so they have to, but the Wreckin' Parks are basic core service. They're a little different.
Now, we see a dedicated funding stream. That's why, in this particular case, we would have to—we provide them an additional amount to be able to cover the refuse service.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly of the opinion that, you know, we took off all the other furloughs off the table, and this one may still require some furloughs. I think we—we look at Mr. Corretts' ideas, or some other ideas that have been floating around, we could probably avoid something like this if we come up with some in the next round. So, I'm not too crazy about this idea, so I'm just putting it out there.
If I add—I—the department income in committee, one of the things they did express, there was dollars given—general fund dollars given to them for basically maintenance in various facilities, and they did mention that that would be one of the things they would look at, is perhaps reduce staff maintenance for some of the—the general fund, basically the city facilities—as an option.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, General Services, I'm glad you took that off the list, I'm glad you took graffiti off the list, you know, I'm glad you took the million-dollar planning off the list. And I just, procedurally, in the future, instead of giving us something that everybody in the community gets all freaked out about, and then we change it, could we, in either closed session or public session, put all our options on the table and know what we're dealing with? So, like with the calligraphers last year, we made World War III over a nickel, and that kind of stuff. So, just as a procedure, that's my first point. A second point is, where's my report backs on seven bucks to park at City Hall that could help General Services going forward, or my five bucks over at the zoo that could help us with that? I'd like to see the report backs on that, okay? Next thing is, is the park-a-meter fund. I want to know how much is in that fund and how it all comes out. My district gets a lot of meters. There's a couple of districts that have no meters. And then, there is a whole sense that my folks in my district pay all in and get nothing back for their quality of life, be it Abbot Kenny or the beach, or some of these other places. I'd like to have a real picture of that parking revenue fund we get from the meter system as a backdrop. And then, on this particular list here that comes to 20 million, I really want Wreckin' Park to come on up right now and ITA, I want to ask a couple of quick questions, if we could do that. I know Mr. Cardenas might want to follow up, and ITA might not, but please, ITA, please come up to the table and Wreckin' Park, rather quickly, please. Now, with the ITA, I care about core functions of your job that impacts every other department, that impacts what we do as a city, core function in your telecommunications. Does this impact that or not? That's what I need to know.
Good afternoon, council members. Mark Wolf with ITA. To answer your question, Councilman, absolutely, this amount will be impacting ITA's operations. We are at a very difficult point in keeping the city's systems going and keeping the lights on and keeping departments operational, as evidenced by even the recent incident we had last week, for—the entire city went down for six hours, and it was due to a couple factors. One, with the reduced staffing levels, we don't have the right skill sets for a lot of the remaining staff we have, they're trying to support the current systems that are before us. And as a result, we have difficulty—it takes us longer to bring back an operation—bring back to operation systems, impacting the operations of all city departments that are providing services to the public. And the second factor is, with this reduction, we have two choices: we either cut staff or we cut expenses. And in either case, in the event that we cut staff, we're going to further degrade the services that we provide to the entire city, or if we cut expense accounts, we have a lot of infrastructure that is past end-of-life, that is due to be upgraded, and if we don't make those investments, equipment's going to be more prone to failure, and all city departments are going to experience more outages.
So, your bottom line is, do not do the 734 or the 900,000?
I think we would respectfully—we understand the situation the city is faced with. We would respectfully ask reconsideration of that amount. It was originally part of our operational plan that was adopted by council. We went after additional revenue, and we've been very diligent in following through to make sure this money is materializing. It's new revenue that's coming into the city as a result of additional franchise monies that are due through an audit—for a past audit through one of the providers, and it was originally baked into our operational plan. So, we came up with $4.2 million, of which this amount was part of that funding.
I know I'm over time, so I'm going to continue, but I'd like Wreckin' Park, either somebody else asks, or I'll push my button to get more specifics there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, for the second time.
Thank you very much. Could we have the fire chief come up, please?
I think he has an answer, what they did on the staff assistance. Good afternoon, Chief.
Oh, sir.
Could you give us an overview? There was a motion a while back about staff assistance, and at the beginning of your budget, you had paramedics, captains, and you also had the issue of, what is it, Hazmat. Could you give us an overview of those three functions, just how you've dealt with them since July 1st? And particularly, emphasis on staff assistance.
Well, right now, every day, we're closing 22 fire companies. We're closing 14 engine companies and eight truck companies.
For the uninformed, tell us what that means. Can you say companies and—
Well, we have engine companies, those are the ones that carry the water, the hose, they have a pump. The truck companies are the hook-and-ladder companies. There are four members assigned to an engine company, and there are five members that are assigned to a truck company, plus there's a pump that follows the trucks, for a total of six people. So, every day, through the modified coverage plan, we are displacing 122 firefighters to cover behind our CTO. Right now, our average CTO is running somewhere in the neighborhood around 14%, 15%, where normally, in good times, it would run around 23%, 24%.
Explain CTO.
Compensatory time off. That's for vacations, for sick leave, for injury on duty, whatever vacancy we have out there. Due to constant staffing, we always hire, we don't allow resources to be closed, with the exception of what we're doing with the modified coverage plan. We are currently saving, in the neighborhood of about $150,000 a day through the modified coverage plan. In the second FSR, our anticipated deficit was estimated at $20.8 million. Our operational plan called for us to bridge a gap of somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million. We are on course to meet our obligation through the—through our operational plan. We have fully implemented the mayor's budget, we have now flexed staff to all of our hazmat squads, we have reassigned those EMS captains, we have gone from 16 EMS districts down to six EMS districts, and so, we're basically on track to meet our goal, as stated several weeks ago.
Now, tell us about specifically the staff assistance.
Well, every day, I have 16 firefighters on duty, I have 14 battalion staff assistants and two division staff assistants, and besides their emergency responsibilities, assisting in managing large-scale emergencies in the city, they're also responsible for ensuring that those 122 firefighters that are placed to cover behind the CTO, the compensatory time off, they make sure that those vacancies get filled. Right now, with the 22 companies that I've got closed, I'm at a break-even position right now. I'm running out of seats to place firefighters, because we do have so many fire resources closed. So, every day, at the end—every morning, we have—we've been running into somewhere between three to five excess firefighters every day to try and find places for them, and it's the staff assistants that ensure that every hole and every dollar is saved. So, 16 firefighters, staff assistants, times three platoons, that's 48 firefighters, are essentially placing 366 firefighters to save between now and the end of this fiscal year somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million. If I eliminated staff assistants, I may get 1.5, maybe $2 million in savings, but I'm going to be forced to cancel the modified coverage plan, because there's no one there to manage the logistics of moving those firefighters around the city.
Let me just—could you clarify one thing, because you have people that—you said 300 and some odd positions?
Yes.
Could you explain, that's people that are not being paid on overtime—
Right.
—to fill those spots? That's what you mean by saving?
Right.
So, if you ran a full, what do we call it, constant staffing, the game plan every day is you'd fill about 1,100 spots on each shift, whether it was on time, whether it was on straight time or overtime?
Right.
You're mandatory to fill that number spot. So, you're telling us that, instead of the 1,100, whatever that number is, you reduce it by 300 positions in overtime to allow you to save $150,000 per day?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the clarity. Now, again, so you're saying also, if you don't have the 16, the 300 people that you manage every day to different work sites—
I can't close the 22 fire companies. They are the ones that facilitate the placement of those 122 firefighters every day.
Now, you have a couple of reports coming back to us, one of them deals with the staff assistance, and the other deals with your new deployment.
Right.
When do we expect those back?
Well, my staff is supposed to deliver a draft of that redeployment plan to me, hopefully in the next week or so.
Okay, so you'll have that, and that will be the scheduling plan for the department once you—
Right. But see, but the thing that everyone needs to understand is, this redeployment plan, once we redeploy the fire department, there's no readjusting it. I mean, we're pretty much done. And I've got to be honest with you, if this was August or September, there's no way I could be closing 22 fire companies in this city. I mean, right now, the hillsides are green, the ground is wet. I mean, I'm getting away with it right now, just because the weather has cooperated with us over the last month or so.
But you also—I think the council gave you the ability, that when you saw situations that required more deployment, you had the ability to bring those resources back in line. Is that still available?
I can still—I can still cancel the modified coverage plan any day of the week.
Okay, so you did that most of last year, and I think it cost about $1 million last fiscal year?
I don't think we spent that much, really. I mean—
But if you have that ability to adjust—
Right. And actually, last month during the rains, I did suspend the modified coverage plan two days.
Okay. But again, just for the public, you have that ability to manage your resources—
I can—I am managing it—
Where'd you go? I answered your question, but let me—I'm through—you can—
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Corretts?
I have a question for Miguel and Jerry on the budget. We've mostly been talking about how we can achieve more revenue through—or less spending through some of these cuts. Have we looked at, although it's counterintuitive, some of the places that I've heard discussed in committee, where we could increase revenue through more spending? Such as, in Transportation Committee, I'm trying to remember, a month, two months ago, we heard that we were understaffed in terms of our parking meter ticket writing crew by about 70 personnel, but that we had made a decision not to hire them, even though they bring in a multiplier of their salary. Have we looked at how much we're costing ourselves by not hiring new people to write the proper amount of tickets and do the proper amount of patrolling, and have we considered actually hiring those people and capturing that revenue?
We're currently working with the DOT on a program that will be coming to you within the next few weeks, that looks at that particular issue. How we do it, the employees that are utilized to do this work, are the details that we're working on, how many, all of those things, but that is part of—one of the things that we've been working with the department to bring back to you.
Okay. Also, in Personnel Committee, we had a discussion about the number of cases that our claims adjusters are carrying, and it was around, I believe, 210 cases, and the industry best practice is around 125 to 150. That's because it's most cost-effective. By hiring fewer people, we get less information, we wind up paying out more on cases, and we have a net loss. Have we looked at making that correction and capturing the revenue that we would capture as a result?
I'd like to say, yes, we have. I think when the item was heard in Personnel, the Personnel Department was short on some staff, and the Personnel has gone through the process of hiring them, folks. And I think at one point, they were saying they were going to be short, perhaps, in workers' comp because of their staffing shortages, and now they have recently come back and said, you know, "We've been able to ramp up, and now that 3 million, you know, we're going to be to the good. We will need the—we will not need the additional cost." So, there's been some improvement with Personnel in that area.
That's good. And lastly, on a couple of the cuts that have been proposed— And lastly, on a couple of the cuts that have been proposed, have we done analysis either with the city attorney's proposed cuts or ITA's proposed cuts to determine whether that will have a net cost to us? Whether the city attorney's people are those who either bring in more money on defense of the city or prosecutions, and whether ITA's cuts would, rather than just dealing with smooth operation of the city, whether it would actually cut our efforts to implement efficiencies that would actually bring in more than the cost we're saving by making those cuts? Have we looked at those two items, and do we have documentation on whether we actually save money or lose money?
The city attorney submitted a general report on...in response to the form...to that reduction. He didn't specify specifically how he would implement those cuts. Ultimately, he has the discretion to determine exactly how that's done.
Can we find out that information? Because certainly, for me, if it wound up actually costing the city money, which I think there's some chance of, that would make me certainly less enthusiastic about making the cut. And the same thing for ITA. I know they can be good sports and absorb it, but if it means that a program we were going to implement that would save us $5 million next year gets implemented a year later, well, if we save half a million to not implement it, I'd rather have them not be good sports and tell us that there's really a greater cost to the city.
Mr. LeBonge. Mr. Tom LeBonge. Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti? Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
Sorry, Mr. LeBonge has left the chambers, I was just in his seat. So the reports back that we have here, colleagues, that will be coming, if I could ask for...so some of these were not moving to spend right away by taking a step today? So for instance, if SPRF was on here, we'd be able to still find out the numbers, or is this all swept as soon as we do this?
The way I understand Mr. Parks's motion is that it would...the $20 million outlined here would be implemented today, and, you know, what I would recommend to avoid any confusion is that, given the different discussion around each item, that we actually go through each item and have a vote for each one.
And colleagues, if we do find a shortfall in some areas, like if people say Reckon Parks is going to be too devastating, or the ITA piece, I know we're still awaiting the SPRF, but SPRF builds up over time, the special parking continues to build, you know, we continue to have parking meters, we continue to have parking lots, and this is surplus from this past year, that $3 to $4 million or whatever?
That is correct, and again, as a reminder, would require an ordinance change not to make it a loan.
Right, so I would...so we can't pass that necessarily today. I would ask you to at least prepare that ordinance change so that we can be aware of it, we'll talk...I know Mr. Parks has strong feelings about it. I personally, just to put my feelings out there, I think that in a year like this, in the midst of the budget crisis, we changed what we did so that that money that we had been taking the last couple of years to help with the deficit, we can only borrow now. I think we need to be able to take that, if it's the difference between laying folks off and not. I think that's an appropriate thing to do, and I want us to have that flexibility. So it sounds like that will have to be a two-step thing anyway, so why don't you just bring that language in, then we'll look at how much is there. It might dovetail, at the same time, Mr. Parks has said the report will come back. So I was just saying, Mr. Parks, that I wanted them to come back with an ordinance change to allow us if we need to, but we'll wait for that report on this SPRF to be able to not just loan against it. I think if ever there is a year to continue what we've done, which is a take and not a loan, I want to be able to have that flexibility, but then we'll have the report back to see. If we had to wait for the report and then make the change, we could be forced to do other things like the furloughs and layoffs.
On the ordinance, we actually forgave $10 million that we took this year, and so therefore, I think we have the ability to flexible, but I'd really like us to see the report.
Yeah, we'll be able to do that, I think, with the timing, so those would come together.
Yeah.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things that we have to be careful, colleagues, is that we are honest with ourselves and the public about what's smoke and mirrors and what's real cuts, and every time we postpone some decisions, and we should postpone things for good reason when that reason is clear and imminent and appropriate, but unfortunately, when it comes to budgeting cuts, all governments across the country, and I think the state of California has demonstrated, and the city of Los Angeles is no exception, that putting off decisions in whole or in part is commonplace. So we have to...I just want to remind us that we've got to be careful. Now, whether today we move forward with $20 million in cuts or $9 million in cuts, I think that we need to be clear and do some of the cuts that we do have enough information today for and actually make them happen, because it's just going to get worse. For example, some of the bigger things we're putting off on the $30 million segment of this $50-plus-million-dollar item, every week that goes by, then we're just pushing that magnitude into a shorter period of time, but the number doesn't change, the $52 million doesn't change, it's just the time element, how many months we have to work with in order to make the reductions actually get smaller. I wanted to point something out when it comes to the presentation that was made by the Information Technology Department. Just so we understand, colleagues, that department just a few years ago had over 700 full-time employees. Right now, they're trying to do the same amount of work, if not more, with the equivalent... because of the furloughs affect them already, the equivalent of less than 420 full-time equivalent employees. So it's no wonder that when disaster strikes or something breaks, that we're going to have outages, we're going to have less productivity from the rest of our masses of employees, et cetera, we have to be careful, and I think it's time that we start looking at it more in a long-term back-and-forth analysis, is that what's the cause and effect? For example, there's no question, whether you're in the private sector or in the public sector, any time that you have to address a breakage or an outage in an emergency fashion, it's no question, it could be as much as 10 times more expensive to address it after the fact than it is to have tried to have the proper personnel ready and willing and able to either prevent it or actually address it internally. Now, whether that's a pipeline breaking, or computer outages, or software breakdowns, or what have you, there's no question that it could be as much as 10 times more expensive, and the problem with that is the money comes from the same pot that we were trying...we thought we were trying to protect or preserve. So my last point on the ITA point is, it's unfortunate that when we ask a department, and in this case, they found a way to honestly put forth and say, we think we can still trim down $4.2 million, and then all of a sudden, we may take an action and say, of that $4.2 million that you've identified, that you're willing to do your best to cut and make it happen, we're going to take $900,000 of that, and we're going to take that away from you, now go find another $900,000 to cut. But with all due respect, we don't do that to all departments, and I think we need to have an element of fairness within all departments, and I dare say that the $1.5 billion department, the biggest department, we let them off the hook and we don't ask them to even make certain cuts once, much less ask them to make certain cuts twice.
Mr. Alakon.
I...I...I was to answer Mr. Parks's question as to whether the chief answered my concern or allayed my concerns, and I have to tell you, and I think the chief knows that I love the fire department, and I try to do everything I can to prioritize the fire department in terms of any budget discussion, but for the life of me, I can't understand the use of staff assistants in the context of whether or not we have firefighters fighting on the line. Let's understand, staff assistance...chief, am I wrong? Staff assistants are firefighters. They're not captains, they're not battalion chiefs, they're firefighters. So what I don't understand is why we need firefighters to essentially do the logistics for managing personnel, to move these 43, 45 bodies for coverage. Why can't we get personnel to do it? Why are we using a firefighter in what is essentially a management or administrative function, and as opposed to putting more resources in the field, fighting fires? The staff assistants are there to support the chiefs. In many regards, people suggest that it's really just a perk for the chief to have a chauffeur. Now, I know that their function is more than being a chauffeur, but we need people to be out there fighting to save lives and fighting fires. I don't think we need firefighters to be moving bodies for coverage. That's a management function. I think you know, Mr. Parks, that's like having a police officer move police personnel, and you would have never done that as chief, and I don't think we should do it in the fire department. Under these conditions, do they provide support to the chiefs? Absolutely, but do they provide a support that is more important than being out in the field? I don't think so. And so I'm not raising...I'm not going to pursue it in the context of this because we seem to...I think we're moving in a direction where we can align ourselves, but we have to consider that whole issue of staff assistants when that report comes back, because I, for one, am not resolved, and I don't know how my colleagues can be resolved when we're closing down companies. I mean, that's just...we shouldn't allow that to happen, with all due respect to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Parks.
I'm next.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. There was an intriguing comment made by the union leadership yesterday, again today, and I think I'm hearing a very strong feeling that they would like to work with the city and figure out ways to deal with both health care and pensions. Do you feel that energy coming in the direction that could be positive so that we can deal with this furlough and firing business, which I have a problem with both that? Are we moving in the right direction, and what can we as council members do to assist, to let the workers know that it is a matter of a...not just this moment, I'm talking about the $300 to $400 million that we're going to deal with in a few months. Is there any comments you can give to what Ms. Julie Butcher was saying and others?
Well, yesterday, I left certainly feeling very optimistic of our ability to do that. As was mentioned, the Joint Labor Management Committee on Health Care Issues unanimously approved over $14 million worth of overall savings, only about a portion of that for the general fund, to help address the deficit starting July 1st, and so that's going to be before Personnel Committee next week, and then before your full council, and we collectively recommend your approval of that. And I think that, at the end of the day, the only way we're going to get out of the deficit we're facing this year, and certainly next year, is through a combination of reductions in which you, as a council, make policy decisions as to what functions we're no longer going to be in the business of, as well as a partnership with labor to come up with an overall package of solutions to eliminate a $350 million deficit facing next year.
Okay, in that context, as Mr. Cardenas was saying, the $1.5 billion, the third rail, the LAPD, I certainly want to hire the attrition, they've been great in my district, and I've been real strong next to them. Have we got a chance to look at their $1.5 billion, to see if we can see other things that aren't core functions that could be worked on? Are we going through those numbers as well?
Yeah, that's part of the assignment, and, you know, it's important to point out that the police department has reduced spending by $100 million this fiscal year by essentially eliminating all overtime in their department, and that was not an easy thing to do. There's a direct outcome for that, it reduces the capacity of the workforce, but it's done through the leadership of the chief, and I think that those kinds of solutions are ultimately what's going to get that major part of the budget to absorb part of that $350 million problem facing next year.
Well, I look at issues like overtime and some of the core functions, and I think we need to look at the whole picture of what they do. I think Charlie Beck's the best cop I've ever seen, and he knows what's really in there, and I think he can look at it, and I'd like to look at it in a way, maybe in closed session, some of those issues. I had asked Reckon Park to come up, and I know my time is running out, Reckon Park could come up and throw the question at them, how does this impact them in terms of providing that basic intervention-prevention strategy that so many of us rely on that the Parks do? Thank you for that, Mr. President. Please, please explain.
Our final speaker, Mr. Parks.
Regina Adams, Executive Officer for Recreation and Parks. Any cuts that would be taken from us at this point would affect our part-time staff at this moment. In this current year's budget, we received $4 million from the general funds, and that's on top of the funds that we generate ourselves from revenue, as well as from the property tax assessment that we receive. If right now, $1.8 million is taken from us so that we can pay part of the sanitation cost for our department, then that means that we would have to do something with those part-timers who have been funded by that. In the current year's budget, our part-time salary account was already cut by about a third, and so this would be almost about another 9% cut to that account. Also, those staff that were employed, the $4 million that we received was for two specific purposes. One was so that we did not cut our class parks program, which is mostly aimed at risk youth, and the other was for us to do the landscape maintenance outside other city facilities such as police stations, fire stations, and libraries, et cetera. Of course, we're already halfway through the fiscal year, so we already expended some of those funds, and so the only place if this $1.8 million is taken would have to be from our part-time account, and of course, we would have to try to figure out what to do for those staff that are funded through that. We were looking at doing self-imposed furlough days, our department right now is exempt from furlough days, but we were looking at possibly doing one furlough day per month for the full-time employees so that we could generate savings to try to save as many of those part-time staff as possible. But one thing that would also be seen immediately by the public is that we would no longer be providing the landscape services for the other city departments, because by charter, the city attorney has opined that we are not to use any of our funds for that purpose. Our purpose is for recreational, and that is our core, and so if these funds are taken, we will immediately cease in doing the landscape services for the other city departments.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me just clarify a couple of things. One, Richard? Richard?
Mr. Alakon. Mr. Alakon?
The question you asked me about the police versus fire, realize, they have a completely different operation because the police have things called sergeants, they don't have sergeants, and so you have firefighters probably doing more of a supervision role than a police officer, I'm just saying, it's a different concept. Their next level, from firefighter to engineer to captain, we have, in the police department, several levels before you get to captain, lieutenants, sergeants, and things like that, so it's a totally different operating, I just wanted to comment on that, having been there a couple of minutes. But let me just comment on a couple of things, is that, Miguel, every time you say this, it gives me chills, when you say that the police department saved $100 million. I think we have to have true disclosure, it was $100 million in cash that wasn't given to them, but they spent $100 million in time off. So it wasn't that it was a cost-neutral, it was time off on the books, and eventually, with $200 accumulated, they weren't there. So I think we need to be aware that we took the $100 million in cash, but certainly, it was not a cost-neutral savings, and so I think we need to clarify that. The other issue I think we need to clarify, someone commented on the city attorney, realized that in six months into this budget, the CAO found the ability to close a $4 million gap for them. Since we've had this additional shortfall, he can't close the remain...that $4 million as promised, he's saying now they have to close one-fourth of it. Also, realize that this is the department that we closed a $4 million gap at the end of last fiscal year. So over 18 months, it's a $7 million hole that's been filled. The issue again, allow the public access budget to come forward so we can see what's going on in ITA, allow the special parking revenue budget to come forward so we can see what's going there before we make any decisions in making that move. Eric, when you commented...where did we go? When you commented about the ordinance coming... When you commented about the ordinance coming forward, if we need to change it, in my judgment, there's only two things you have to change if you wanted to take money out of the special parking revenue fund. You'd have to change the fiscal year, and you'd have to change the dollar value. Because what's in the charter now, or in the ordinance now, is it says the $10 million that we took from last year, we're not going to pay back, and it gives the fiscal year. So, it's not to rewrite, and it's not a large job to do, I would think. It's just a matter of changing two things. But I would suggest, and I'd hope that we can move forward, if we can't address the $20 million today, then stand by for January 30th, stand by for the mid-year report, and stand by for the budget for 11-12. This is minimal, particularly when 12 million deals with savings from projects that are now finished. We're only dealing with 8 or 9 million that deal with operational issues in a department, and all of the things that were critical, the graffiti, the fire department, all those other issues, are on the table for before the 30th. So, I'd ask for an eye vote that we move the amended 12A with the extraction of that one phrase under the reduced reimbursement funding for EAA. We strike the phrase "laying off employees," or "laying off employees." But we approve the $20 million and move forward and wait for these reports to come in because we have a busy, busy time between now and the 30th, addressing significantly higher dollar values. And if the money does not come in on the projection of overspending continues, this report will just be an interim report, and we'll be dealing with even more serious issues. So, I'd ask for an eye vote on this item.
Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Garcetti? And after Mr. Garcetti will be Mr. LeBons.
We are one and the same again. Because information is knowledge is power, and you're an angel in the City of Angels.
And the queue comes up, and that's what I call.
I think the only other change that I would make, there may be a couple others that folks are, I know, stirring about, but I think for ITA, what we did with the City Attorney is we said, okay, you have a deficit of $4 million, at least reduce a quarter of this yourself. What we did with ITA is we said, hey, you've got this deficit, take 100% of it. I think it's fair, and I think the reason why we're doing that with City Attorney and with ITA is we do need a path for longer-term sustainability. And I think ITA, and I just met with ITA a couple of days ago as well, needs to look at a path of what we can do in-house and what we can't do longer term. And so, we need to continue that to see where we can save money. And I think you'll have support, grudgingly, but it is the times, and it helps us support our services, to look at that. So, we need you to take a small cut to be able to see that we're serious and to help balance this. But I think if we're going to say it's a quarter there, we should do a quarter of ITA. Either that, or we should be doing 100% for the City Attorney and 100% for ITA. It's just kind of a, I think we should be consistent. So, I guess, I mean, it's not a big one. So, if it was remaining deficit of 734, they should be, you know, tasked with a couple hundred thousand, that or 100, whatever a quarter is, 370...
Why don't you make a motion on that?
Keep it simple, 200. It's a little over 25%, but it's, let's make it 200,000.
Okay. Why don't you make a motion and approve the report?
Okay?
So, I am clear, so the 900,000 we're reducing down to 200?
Yeah, I was a little confused of how 734 becomes 900. I know the audit monies are 900. Is that right? Is that why it's 900? So, they need to absorb 200,000 of the remaining deficit.
So, that's 200 to the 900?
So, it changes that to 200. Yes.
So, the overall savings is 20,500,000?
The audit monies was 166, but I think that, we can sweep the audit monies, and they have to come up with a balance. Okay?
Okay, Miguel, you have that?
But there was, to avoid confusion, there was a lot of different concerns raised, and I just want to make sure that we were clear as to what's being cut and what is being deferred for report back. So, if we could go through each item and have a vote on that, that would be helpful.
Okay, let's do that. So, I move to split, Mr. Zine, I move to split the B's, and we'll take the votes on each one of them, just so we can have clarity. So, we'll start with the aging, 150,000.
Mr. Coretz is on the queue. Mr. Coretz.
Actually, I was just going to suggest the exact same thing, that we break them up item by item.
Very well. See no one else on the queue? Away we go. Mr. Garcetti, you'd like to chair that? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. All right, so the first one, folks, is the transfer savings from aging. Is there any objection to that? That's 150,000. Seeing none, there's no objection to that. Mr. Santana, next is the absorption of 1 million of the 4 million deficit for City Attorney. Is there any objection? Mr. Coretz?
Yeah, I object to that.
Okay, we'll take a vote on that. Why don't we open the roll on this one? When it's unanimous, I'll just do it without objection, otherwise, we'll vote on these as well. Okay?
So, the transfer of aging was unanimous?
Yes, aging was unanimous. On the City Attorney, cut, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that is approved. To the Convention Center, increasing the related cost reimbursement for 100,000. Any objection? Seeing none, that is approved or included. We'll vote on it all at the end, folks. Transferring the audit monies from ITA, which has been reduced to 200,000. Mr., okay, we'll take a vote. Mr. Cardenas objects, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
8 ayes, 5 noes.
Okay, that is included. For a total of 200, exactly. Funding it for the mayor and council for 1 million, any objection? Seeing none, that'll be included. Suspension of March, police hiring class, and increasing class size for April, May, and June to make up for that. 200,000, any objection? Seeing none, that'll be approved. Wreck and Parks to reimburse general fund for refuse services for 1.8 million. Okay, we'll take a vote on that. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
6 ayes, 7 noes.
Okay, we will, somebody want to move something else with that, like a report back on that instead? Sorry? Okay, Mr. Rice has also known that.
30th report?
Yeah, why don't we include that? No objection to the January 30th report on that. Okay? To the 3 million for the reducing reimbursement funding, is there any objection? Seeing none, we'll include that. As amended, yes, without the laying off employees piece, sorry, thank you for the clarification. No objection there. Sweeping the savings identified in Capital Finance, 10.1. Okay, no objection. The sweep for CIP savings, 2 million, no objection there. And then, increasing related cost reimbursements from the Stormwater Pollution Abatement Fund and Gas Tax, 500,000, no objection there. So, I think that's 2.5, so it should be 18, 250, 18 million 250,000 of cuts for today. We also moved the preparation of the ordinance on the SPRF, on the loan, which we will assess with the report back on the SPRF as well. That's a possible source of up to 3 or 4 million dollars to also deal with this. Okay?
Then, there was the other items on Mr. Parks' motion on number one.
Which items? Sorry, do you want to just walk us through which ones those were?
Number one was, as it relates to the furloughs, a report back on that.
Does anybody have objections to the report backs? If not, we'll include that as well. Okay, please, then, oh, Mr. Weston, you're on the queue? Okay. Let's go ahead and take an overall vote. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay. Those adjustments will be made. Thank you, colleagues. That's an important step today that we take in the midst of the ongoing budgetary situation. Thank you to our CAO and CLA, to our Budget Committee as well for their hard work on this. Okay? Thank you. Next order of business. Let's call roll for the special meeting, please. Do we have anything else? Oh, let's take special one first, then. That's right. On the findings, I can speak to the findings. We had a call this week from the United States Department of Energy about the visit of President Hu Jintao to the United States, and the desire of the Chinese government, the United States government, at the national level in the Obama administration around electric charging, to measure the pilots that we'll be doing with our electric cars, charging stations here. And Shanghai will be doing the same, and it allows us to be able to compare that data. We got the call from the White House yesterday asking us to put that in, so under Rule 23, President Hu's visit is coming. We have the general language that the United States government provided for us to be able to come to an agreement between Shanghai and Los Angeles. We checked with our local folks here, and everybody, we've actually queued this up to be able to collect that data. The new partnership is something new, and that came after the posting of the agenda. On the findings, anybody else wish to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on the findings. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, those findings are made under Rule 23. Did you want to be heard on this, Mr. Sax? Come on forward.
Thank you very quickly, Arnold Sax. Not wishing to get political, but since the President of China is going to be coming here, and we know from experience the difficulties that occurred on the west side of L.A. when the President of the United States arrived in L.A., will there be some traffic abatement programs that could be made known to the public so that...
I'm sorry, sir, this is actually not, it's before us at all. It's not even closely related to that.
But it will be planned. I mean...
Sorry, sir, that is not even taking place in this city. It's in Washington, D.C., but thank you for your comments. The program is between Los Angeles and Shanghai. The visit is happening in Washington, D.C. of President Hu. All right, let's go ahead and open the roll. On this item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you, that is approved. If we can send that forth with, please. And next, we can call the roll for the special meeting. Alakon, Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Coretz, Grocharian, LeBons, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. Thank you. First items, please. Item 13 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. A City Attorney report and ordinance has been submitted and distributed to council. Okay, there's no objection. That is before us. We'll take public comments on this. Arnold Sax, you're the first speaker. Kim Neverman will be the second.
Yes, very quickly, Arnold Sax. An ordinance that's been submitted to the City Council, will this require, again, a strict interpretation by the city's attorney's office? And does this reflect on any, the ballot measure that's been put before the public for the tax of the marijuana collectives? Will that have any effect on that?
Thank you. Thank you. Kim Neverman will be our next speaker. James Shaw will follow.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I come to speak, you know, like when an ordinance is passed and SEQA items come up for consideration. And the one I would like to speak on is the aesthetics of the SEQA part. I work for a collective downtown L.A., and from my understanding, aesthetics also means appearance. Since we have been there, we have, like, cleaned up the neighborhood. I have personally got myself involved with the LAPD, many officers at Central Division, and I took up a personal graffiti vengeance in our neighborhood. Worked with Mr. Paul Rocks and obtained city paint, city brushes, city rollers, so that, you know, we can keep our neighborhood beautiful. And, you know, before it ever comes to where they want to relocate us, think of the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Think of our neighborhood. You could walk on First Street from Alameda to Hewitt, and then down to Second. Look on both sides of the streets. I guarantee you will not see graffiti. That was never the case years ago. We don't have the homeless in that area that we used to have anymore. That, you know, is like aesthetics. It's all things that make the neighborhood and our contribution to our neighborhood a success. Because, like I said, I took upon this, and I submitted copies of this to you. This is a sample graffiti log that I did personally over the course of two weeks, and you will see how I, you know, sectioned it out. I wished I had 50 pages of before and after pictures to show you, but I don't. But I think part of SEQA also, like I said, includes aesthetics, and the collective that I work for, probably, I would say, the things that we have undertook to make our neighborhood more beautiful, you know, it has to be recognized. And I would encourage you all to take a walk through, and you won't see any graffiti.
Thank you, Mr. Neverman. Our next speaker is James Shaw. After that is Wayne Spindler. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. Chairman Garcetti. My name is James Shaw, Director of the Union of Medical Marijuana Patients. I also direct AgSite Incorporated, which developed AgSite Secure, a self-imposed regulatory system by patient associations who want to demonstrate tracking of their cannabis from seed to consumption to prove non-diversion to municipalities and law enforcement. I also direct one of the oldest patient associations in the City of Los Angeles, right here in downtown Los Angeles, Arts District Healing Center. I'm here today to speak to you about SEQA issues related to the proposed medical marijuana ordinance. I provided you today with a letter from our attorneys outlining some of the issues that we think need to be addressed regarding SEQA, if in fact you continue an ordinance process like the one that had been in place, that would effectively displace or bring to demise most of the patient associations in our city. I have additionally provided a copy of the amendments to the ordinance that I proposed in October, that with any new ordinance might forego a requirement to address SEQA issues. There are a variety of issues that can be addressed with regard to the ordinance process in SEQA related to environmental impact and the physical impact it would have on our communities. But what really engages my heart is the impact this ordinance will have on our communities and the psychosocial well-being of our member patients within these communities. What has practically happened over the course of the last five years for my patient association is that we have collaborated together with local community members to provide a huge resource of social services as an alternative to medicine, including cannabis, that aids in the curative healing of many of the socially-related diseases that afflict our member patients, and therapeutic healing to our terminal member patients that find relief in the activities and fabric of our community culture. In the next few weeks, I will make an effort to personally visit you to provide an outline of the severe impact this ordinance will have on the social services currently available to our member patients and the cultural impact on the patients who make up our community. Thank you.
Wayne Spindler is our next speaker. Suma Dog will follow. Is Mr. Spindler here? I do not see him. Is Mr. Dog here? He has left the premises. John Walsh is our next speaker, then. Mr. Walsh here. Do not see him. William Leahy? We've got a winner. Come on down. After that will be Sam Humeid. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Was that the first lottery-winning?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'm William Leahy. I've been coming here for years. At first, I wanted to say that I've heard each and every council member's concerns for their districts, and I have to respect that. Ms. Perry's concerns are certainly different than Mr. Alakon's, and so forth and so on. First ordinance, I think you all tried to solve everybody's problems in one document. That's not going to happen, didn't happen, and it's now gone away. We now have a lottery situation that you're considering for 100. I don't think that that's really the direction that we need to be going. There's 135. If you look at West Hollywood with 40,000 people, they have four collectives. I certainly think in a city of 4 million, that an additional 35, bringing it to 135, would be a much better situation. And the lottery itself, I've talked with a number of council members today. They all have told me they have not seen the Sacramento ordinance. The Sacramento ordinance has grandfathered in and is a very successful ordinance. I honestly don't see how any of you can possibly make a decision without seeing successful ordinances in the rest of the state. The judge has issued an ordinance to you people. He does not want to govern the city. He wants you guys to govern the city. He wants you guys to govern the city. So this afternoon, I will make sure that the Sacramento ordinance will come to each and every one of you. And again, I'm not much of a gambler. I don't want to see a roulette wheel here. I'd rather go to Las Vegas to do my gambling, not to City Hall. Please, let's not have a lottery. And thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir, and thank you for your patience today. Sam Hamed is our next speaker. After that is Victoria Zavala. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Honorable members of the city council, as you can see today, I do not have a script. I am speaking straight from the heart. I own and operate Corneal Holistic Wellness Center in Studio City, the first dispensary registered in Council District Two. Clearly, I've been getting through to you guys with every talk I've had. I had a talk with you two days ago where I said, let's have a compromise. Invite me to your table, let's chat. The ordinance today is a step forward. The fact that you guys chose a date, September fourteenth, two thousand and seven, a major step forward. The lottery, not such a good idea. Imagine, if you will, the State Assembly coming down saying, hey, you know what, we're not so happy with the city council. We're going to let maybe twelve of you guys stay and have a lottery for the rest of you to figure out who stays and who goes. And Mr. Corretts can go to West Side, Mr. Rosendahl can go to Studio City, Mr. Alakon can go down to San Pedro. It would be a mess, and that's what you're asking us to do. We have so few dispensaries that are actually legitimate and registered and qualified to do the job that the patients require. There's only a hundred and thirty-five of us. Eliminate the lottery idea, grandfather in who has left from the original hundred and eighty-six that registered in two thousand and seven, and let's move forward and do what's right. If the city decides and the people decide they need more, they can speak to the neighborhood city council and say, hey, you know what, we're short four dispensaries in our area. We can't get to these dispensaries. Can we get a couple more? Fine, and then let's move forward with that. But to arbitrarily knock it down to a hundred based on what we've already worked for is just ridiculous. I hope you guys think about this and work together with us and let's open up a dialogue and keep working. You guys are doing great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zavala is next, and then Yamilth Bolayos.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Victoria Zavala, and actually, I come from you a little bit out of jurisdiction. It's still within L.A. County. I reside in Antelope Valley, which is Quartz Hill unincorporated area. We have a problem out there. We don't have safe access. I actually happen to be a director and a former council candidate, the first Latina pro-cannabis candidate that ran in the city of Lancaster, right? Well, with that being said, I still don't have safe access, still with the Better Business Bureau, with the Palmdale Chamber, Quartz Hill Chamber, and plan to continue. We're advocating and we're doing the best we can to create more awareness. But the problem is, is here in the city of L.A., we're looking at you for direction. This is where we have our direction. We know a lot of members that come and they rely on the safe access out here in the city of L.A. So it behooves me to minimize the hundred and, you know, just down to a hundred. Look at the volume. We have approximately a half a million people in the Antelope Valley. We need help out there, too. So we depend on L.A.'s city. So all I'm asking today is that those who've been in compliance, just like I have, respect what they've been doing, look into what they're doing, and please, just take a better look at this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bolayos is next, and Dejeet Kuti.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Yamilth Bolayos. I am a resident of the city of Los Angeles. I'm the patient operator for Pure Life Alternative, and I'm the president of the Greater Los Angeles Collectives Alliance. I'm here to thank you for ordering the city attorney to produce a new ordinance that is workable, and I'm here to tell you that the lottery is totally unacceptable. How can you take a hundred organizations of a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and thirty-seven that have been working with the city, that have been paying taxes, have been doing anything they're supposed to do, and just pick a hundred? That is not fair. Mr. Garcetti, you told us once that those of us that had worked with you, had worked with the city, would be protected. How am I protected in a lottery of a hundred? I don't understand that. And I don't understand how the city at this point could make a decision like that. You guys have to let the whole hundred and thirty-seven that have been compliant, that have turned in their paperwork and that have tried as hard as I have to stand on their own merit. You need to let them all come up and stand up and stand on their own merit. And if you guys think that they don't, you know, have the, they're not qualified to stay open, then don't let them open. But everyone that's been in this process, that's been paying for a second location because you guys told us to do that last year, everyone that's been trying to work hard to provide safe access in the city should be given a chance. All hundred and thirty-seven should be able to stand on their own merit. And I don't think that a lottery is a good thing. I think that the way that we registered and we opened our businesses should be the way that we're looked at. In other words, look at the tax registration form, and that's how we should be given the chance to come up and prove our credibility and the fact that we can stay open. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Dejeet Kuti? And then Sarah Armstrong.
Good afternoon, council. Dejeet Kuti, District Four. Generally, patients are pleased that we're moving forward with amendments, however bittersweet. But I'd like to point out the dangerous rhetoric that's coming from our city's attorney's office, who's blatantly blaming the judge for the proliferation of collectives. This proliferation began in two thousand and five and has nothing to do with Judge Moore. So let's be accurate about history here. In September two thousand and seven, there were approximately four hundred and eighty-five collectives operating in Los Angeles, of which a hundred and eighty-seven of them registered under the faulty moratorium scheme. So what happened to those other three hundred? Either they didn't learn about or they didn't know about the registration process. Some of them actually came to register and weren't allowed to do so. Some of them conferred with their business counsel and were told that the moratorium was illegal and not to register under it. And then, of course, we had the situation with former LAPD detective Dennis Packer, who quote-unquote told collectives that when they registered and were on a city list, he was going to bust their ass, okay? That's why people didn't register. That's what happened with those other three hundred collectives. So this isn't a proliferation. This is those other collectives that were actually operating prior to September two thousand and seven that are seeking their due process that Judge Moore says that they need to have. Also, the lottery, I think there's already been a lawsuit. I think that was one that David Salzberg, Zuma Dog, won. He contested the lottery system in Venice for allowing vendors to have to go through a daily lottery in order to conduct business, and he won. So I would think that we would see the same situation, that we can't have a lottery in doing business in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Armstrong is next.
Sarah Armstrong, founding member of the Working Group. I come before you today to beg you to abandon the idea of a lottery. Lotteries are expensive to mount, they're easily corrupted, and they reward people randomly rather than on the basis of merit. If you take the date that dispensaries obtain their tax registration certificates and allow the oldest of these to register first, you ensure that the most experienced operators take the first spots. Anyone who filed after these, one hundred and thirty-nine first responders, goes on a waiting list in the order that they obtained their tax certificates. Using this system, there is no lottery. People have a predetermined spot on a waiting list instead, as they do in West Hollywood, and this system has worked very well in West Hollywood. The pre-Icos, those brave men and women who came forward and registered when asked to do so so they could legally continue to minister to the sick and dying, should not find themselves at the mercy of a lottery. By coming forward and registering, they pre-surrendered important constitutional rights and endured much hardship. Despite this, they established squadka to ensure safe operating protocols at a time when the city would not come forward and establish them themselves. They pioneered the forty-five-dollar cap to ensure patients had access to affordable medicine. Most importantly, they established compassion programs so that the sick, who are poor, still had access to this precious medicine. They worked tirelessly with you to bring forth a workable ordinance. Allowing the oldest to register first is safer for patients in the city. The reason it is safer for the city is this is exactly what Judge Moore suggested you do and ensures that you are proceeding in a legally correct manner. I hope that you will seriously look at the idea of a lottery. The older ICOs take care to take care of their patients, to keep their compassion programs going, and to work with you to find solutions. If you throw it up into just anybody, who knows what you'll end up with? Thank you.
All righty. You're welcome. That's our last, Mr. Spindler, I guess you left the room and now you're back. So you'll be our last public speaker on the matter.
Battle of the potheads, Part Twenty-Five or whatever it is now, so we have the Judge Moore, or the moron, is telling the city that they have to have the pot dispensaries. But there seems to be a problem that you haven't given them the chance to determine which of the hundred is going to survive. Why not let the hundred and thirty-five that are eligible get together and work it out amongst themselves and come up with a list of a hundred on their own? Let's try that first. It's called mediation. And you could do that through mediation. Now, if you have a lottery, how do you do the lottery? Do you put in the names and a hat and have Tom Labange draw the names out? Because what's going to happen is, is that there's going to be a great deal of lobbying. Originally, all you guys, and I attended a lot of these meetings, everybody agreed that three per council district was going to be what was the recommended norm. So there were going to be something in the neighborhood of forty-five, three in each council district, and the rest were out. Now, Jane Usher and Carmen Trutanich drafted something, and apparently with eight hundred lawyers, they couldn't come up with an ordinance that could pass a constitutional test in the Superior Court. Jane Usher should be fired immediately for that. Kurt Liedsche should be fired. Carmen Trutanich should resign. And we should have a whole new set of leaders that should just be specifically handling this problem. Go to West Hollywood, look at their ordinance, because they've never, they've never had their ordinance overturned, as far as I understand it works. Now, Antelope Valley, there's people coming from Antelope Valley into L.A. to buy narcotics. There's people coming from other areas to buy narcotics. That is exactly why you shouldn't have this in the first place. These people are driving into the city. If you go down the fourteen freeway coming into L.A. city, somebody gets high, they buy the pot, they crash and kill five people, the city's liable. Why is the city liable? Because the city is a co-conspirator in the distribution and illegal sale of narcotics. On the ballot coming up in March, you're putting a ballot measure on to tax this marijuana. You cannot tax marijuana because if you allow a tax to occur on an illegal Schedule One narcotic, that's in violation of federal law. The Attorney General right now is telling everybody, he's not going to enforce the law. He's going to let it go. Well, what happens in a couple of years when, you know, President Palin comes in with a new Attorney General and they do a one-eighty? The city's going to have hundreds of millions of dollars of liability, criminal prosecutions, including forfeitures are going to exist, because this is going to be a big cash cow for the government when they come in to shut it down, and you guys need money, the state of California needs money. So when they make the money and they get all the money for all those drugs, they're going to come in and seek forfeiture and criminal convictions. In the end, it's a disaster. Jerry Brown has said something interesting, and that is, if you're going to make cuts, don't fund the program at all, and then you're not cutting anything. So you should give this to a mediation, let them come back with a list of a hundred. Now, if they're not going to agree, then cancel the whole thing completely, and then you're not cutting anybody out. It just doesn't exist in the first place. Thank you.
All right. In the future, we'll start the clock in appropriate time, because it wasn't started appropriately, promptly. Okay, that completes public comment. Mr. Garcetti, you're up.
Thank you. Colleagues, there's a thirteen A that circulated, which I don't know if there's any objection to. I don't think there should be. It was Mr. Reyes's motion to make sure that there's funding in place. If there's no objection, that will accept that as an amendment. Is there any? If not, then I will withhold pursuant to Rule Thirty-Nine on this ordinance, withhold unanimous consent, which kicks us automatically over one week. It was going to happen anyway, but instead of doing after an hour of debate, let's just do it now.
So with that, Mr. Corretts? That ends debate. Okay, so it's a tool that we haven't used, and I think it was an appropriate tool. And there's no vote, so it carries till next week. This will come back when, Mr. Clerk? When does this come back?
Next week, sir. Next Friday.
This will return next Friday. So if you're here on this matter, number thirteen. All right. Mr. Garcetti, next Friday?
Correct. Sorry. Under the rules, it's not my discretion. It kicks over one week.
So it takes over till next Friday?
Under the council rules, correct.
A week from today? Okay, great. So that matters now.
If you're following along, usually, an ordinance takes two readings. It passes on the first reading if more than twelve people unanimously vote for it. That wasn't going to happen today anyway. So it will have to go to a second reading either way, and instead of staying here for an hour and taking that vote, I'm automatically kicking it to that second reading.
So that matter is pushed to next Friday. Okay, Mr. Clerk? Next item.
Council has motions for posting an effort. The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Parks?
We have announcement that Martin Luther King Parade is Monday. Certainly invite everyone right after the parade in La Mert Park where the parade ends. There'll be a festival that's hosted by the Eighth District. So we invite all of you and the public, and hopefully it doesn't rain like it did last year.
Well, it is sunshine skies predicted. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, for those who weren't here during the presentations earlier.
Can we have quiet in the chamber? Sergeant Arms, please quiet it down.
Just thank once again Clay Lacy for all of his talent and service, not only to the city of Los Angeles, actually to the entire aviation world. We honored him today. He's been flying since he was twelve years old, and he's been flying for many decades now. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Clay Lacy once again on the record for all of his wonderful service and the employment that he provides for the San Fernando Valley and his leadership that has helped us have one of the most successful airports in the world when it comes to general aviation airports, our Van Nuys Airport. Thank you.
And those who tuned in late, we did honor him appropriately at the beginning of council with a resolution from the council. Mr. Alakon?
I just want to let the San Fernando Valley residents know that we will be having recognition for Martin Luther King's celebration at the Boys and Girls Club of San Fernando Valley, one-one-two-five-one Glen Oaks Boulevard. That event will begin at eight-thirty. It's been an ongoing event for the past several years, and there's been a tremendous recognition for it. And so I think there's still limited availability, but please contact my office for more information by dialing between now and five o'clock, one-eight-one-eight-eight-four-seven-seven-seven-seven. I'm sorry, that's the downtown office.
Thank you. Any other announcement? Mr. Rosendahl, announcement?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we do every year, this Sunday, January sixteenth, at eleven-thirty, and I will be there at the Venice Japanese New Year's Shin-Kai event. And the part I love the most about this event, and I've been going for the last six years, is I give out certificates to those who have hit eighty years of age. And it's usually a group of twenty or thirty people. It's a wonderful event. It's held over there at their civic center at twelve-four-four-eight Braddock Drive. So if you're interested in some real cultural diversity and a wonderful experience, there's music, there's dance, and there's all kinds of wonderful people from the Venice Japanese community, please come over for their New Year's celebration. And you know, we're finishing up one year and we're going into another year. Does anybody, where's Mr. Labange to tell us what the next year is that we're coming into? Well, we'll save that for another date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And inviting folks to come out to Tarzana tomorrow, eight to eleven, at Saint James Presbyterian Church, one-nine-four-one-four Ventura Boulevard, for beautification, tree planting along Ventura Boulevard. Public is invited to participate. Mr. Alakon, another announcement?
Yeah, I neglected to mention the pet adoption event, January fifteenth and sixteenth, Saturday and Sunday, from twelve to four P.M. at the Northeast Valley Shelter, one-five-three-two-one Brand Boulevard, Mission Hills. Paul, did we adopt that animal today? Paul, Corretts, did we adopt that animal today?
I actually don't know that.
Okay, well, hopefully, we adopted one out of city council, and Saturday and Sunday, we hope to adopt many, many more out of the Northeast Valley Shelter.
All right, thank you. I think that completes the announcements. No, see no other announcements. Journey motions. We have Mr. Parks, journey motions. Please stand, everyone in the chambers, please stand, the journey motions. And we'll start with this side. Mr. Corretts, do you have a journey motion?
Yes, Mr. President. And I'm sad to say that today we adjourn in the memory of Margot Ann Veal, who passed away on January eighth. She was the mother of Inglewood City Clerk Avon Horton and the mother-in-law of Jerome Horton, the vice chair of the State Board of Equalization. These have been devastating months for the Hortons and their friends and family, since just two months ago, we adjourned in memory of Margot's husband, Ben Veal. But along with the sadness, there's much to rejoice in a long and happy marriage and blessed lives and contributions of both the Veals. As you may recall, Ben Veal was best known for being a historic trailblazing contractor, becoming one of the first African-American contractors to build major-sized skyscrapers, including the Federal Building in Los Angeles. His wife, Margot Veal, was born in January of 1931 in Dusseldorf, Germany. She migrated to the United States before World War II, when we were in the midst of the Great Depression, and she grew adulthood in these toughest of times. She married her lifelong partner Benjamin in March of 1957, and their mutual respect and love allowed them to enjoy 53 blissful years of matrimony, despite the harsh racial climate at the time, which did not look favorably upon interracial marriages. Known as the tenacious young lady and blessed with beauty and talent, which allowed her to excel as a model and dancer, Margot was also a savvy businesswoman with keen monetary and banking instincts. Her business acumen and economic vision enabled her to purchase real estate in the View Park community of Los Angeles during a time when interracial couples were barred from the area and all the properties had restrictive racial covenants. Margot and Ben crossed the forbidden social and economic barriers that were associated with mixed marriages, prevailing against insurmountable odds and paving the way for others to follow. What they accomplished in their personal lives and in their social and political efforts was truly notable. They exemplified not just the efforts and legacy of the civil rights movement, but also the bonds of trust, love, and abiding friendship that the movement depended upon during years of segregation, discrimination, and sustained violence. And they offer a great and inspiring example to us as we celebrate the life of Martin Luther King Jr., for as we celebrate his life, we also celebrate the lives of those who helped us all by transforming society for the better. Margot dedicated her life to her family and was blessed with four children, Patricia, Bingham, and Yvonne, and Eleanor, 11 grandchildren, Chanel, Maisha, Darren, Matthew, Jade, Ferguson, Brittany, Summer, Benjamin, Samantha, and Elena, and two grandchildren, two great-grandchildren, Tyson and Sahara. In addition, she leaves behind a host of nieces and nephews. And services for Margot Veal will take place on Wednesday, January 19th, at 11:30 at Inglewood Park Cemetery.
I will join in that adjourning motion. Mr. Alakon?
Yes, members. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Osvaldo Domingo Castro, father of Paul Castro, an employee at the Bureau of Street Services. He passed away on January 12th this year, surrounded by his family due to complications from Parkinson's disease. He was born on May 6th, 1933, in Buenos Aires, Argentina. In 1968, he immigrated to the United States, and shortly afterward, he became a U.S. citizen. He worked as a technician for Sony for 20 years. Osvaldo was active in programs at Las Palmas Senior Center, and during his retirement, he helped some friends by working as a salesman at their auto dealership on San Fernando Road. He was a resident of Silmar for over 22 years and was an avid soccer fan. He's survived by his wife of 50 years, Emma, his son Paul, daughter Grace, four grandchildren, Tommy, Jason, Michael, and Amanda. He will be truly missed, and may he rest in peace. I also ask that we adjourn in the name of Adrian Torres II. He is the uncle of Dan Rosales, my planning deputy in the Silmar office, but he's also the father of Sergeant Adrian Torres at LAPD Mission Division. I also believe his daughter Patricia was one of my students at Mary Immaculate, when I used to teach, many, many years ago. I could be wrong on that one, though, I'm not sure. In any case, Adrian Torres II passed away on Friday, January 7th, from the result of prostate cancer. He was born on January 9th, 1938, and like so many Hispanics in Los Angeles, he comes from El Paso, Texas. He came to Pacoima, California, where he attended San Fernando High School. After graduating high school, he enlisted in the U.S. Navy. After his discharge from the Navy, he returned to Pacoima, and in 1963, he was married, and he and Maria have lived in the same home in Pacoima for the last 43 years. Adrian worked at the Pacoima Post Office for the last 35 years. His hobbies included camping and fishing. He was also a handyman, and he volunteered as a baseball coach at Mary Immaculate Church. He has participated for many years in the San Fernando Valley Veterans Day Parade. He is survived by his wife Maria, his son Sergeant Adrian Torres, as I said, with LAPD Mission Division. His daughters Patricia Torres and Graciela Torres, one brother, four sisters, five grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. He will be truly missed, and of course, may he rest in peace.
Mr. Pacoima.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Van Nuys community, the San Fernando Valley, and all of Los Angeles today grieves the loss of LAPD Captain William Eaton, who passed away just yesterday after a struggle with esophageal cancer in the prime of his life. He passed away far too early, and our community really grieves his loss. So I ask that we rise and adjourn in his memory today. Captain Eaton was born and raised in Santa Cruz. He went on to study criminal justice at Cal State Sacramento, where he was a standout football player. In 1989, he began his public safety service with the LAPD. He was first assigned to the Hollywood area, and while he was in Hollywood, earned his master's degree in criminal justice. He soon thereafter was promoted to sergeant in 1996, and was also a senior lead officer. Captain Eaton worked a variety of assignments throughout his career, including the foothill and Hollywood divisions as a patrol sergeant, vice supervisor, and an internal affairs investigator. In 2001, Captain Eaton was promoted to lieutenant, then worked as the officer in charge of the Hollywood Vice Section. And in 2003, Captain Eaton was selected to serve as the adjutant to the deputy chief, commanding officer of Professional Standards Bureau. He achieved his final rank of captain in August 2006, after completing a tour as the officer in charge of the Ethics Enforcement Section. Captain Eaton was a man who would walk into a room and immediately command attention, just because of his physical size. And I think that was the first thing that everybody noticed about him, but immediately after that, they noticed what a gentle giant he was. He was a man who was soft-spoken and gentlemanly, a great community activist, as well as a police department leader. He was deeply committed to many of the volunteer activities that surrounded the Van Nuys Division, and especially was very devoted to the Jeopardy program, which addresses the needs of youth at risk in that community. He was a big man with a very, very big heart, and his loss is a very, very big loss. One of his final acts of service and commitment was serving as the lead fundraiser for the Special Olympics in the area, another one of the many organizations that he passionately devoted his time to and made such a difference to. Captain Eaton leaves very large shoes to fill, both metaphorically and literally. And this is a community that will, that will miss him and will remember him forever. Captain Eaton leaves behind his two sons, James, 5 years old, and Matthew, 7 years old. But truly, the entire area of Van Nuys and the San Fernando Valley is his extended family, and we will miss him greatly. Funeral services have not been finalized, but will likely be held next week, and I'd ask that all members join me in this adjournment.
All members. Adjourning motions, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Wendell Spates. Wendell, in his right, Doris, longtime resident and activist in the 8th District. Wendell's funeral arrangements are being held at Winston Marquary, 9501 South Vermont, and the viewing will be Sunday, the 16th, 4 to 7, and Monday, the 17th, 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. The funeral service will be held at the Second Zion Travelers Baptist Church in 11867 South Main, and they will have a viewing between 10 and 11 on Tuesday, the 18th, and the funeral service will begin at 11.
And Mr. Garcetti.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Robert J. Bob Felixson, who passed away at age 90 on January 12th, 2011. He was born in Cleveland, Ohio, but lived here in Los Angeles for many, many decades. He's survived by his wife Jane, his sister Flora Schneider, and also his children, Carol Felixson, Nancy Felixson, and the late John Felixson. Nancy Felixson is the wife of Pam Cook, and I think many of us are friends with her. She's now a judge, but many years as a Democratic activist. Bob, her father-in-law, Nancy's father, was an incredible authority nationwide on land use law, somebody who was a national authority on real estate in general and had concurrent careers in real estate and law. He was a negotiator, an entrepreneur, an executive attorney, broker, advisor, but he also delved into politics. He ran for the 28th Congressional District in 1962 here in Los Angeles, and in 1960s, he set up then Senator Kennedy's campaign headquarters here in Los Angeles as well. He studied Case Western and then served in World War II in the Coast Guard, and he was able to be very involved in community activities, including being on the Board of Directors and one of the founders of the Beit Tishuvah Addiction Recovery Center. And he was president of the West Side JCC, the Jewish Centers Association, the Welfare Planning Council of Los Angeles, Menorah Housing Foundation, National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependency, Lachaim Awareness of Jewish Family Services, the National Conference on Christians and Jews, and so on and so forth. He also served in executive positions at the United Jewish Fund, the Jewish Federation Council, University of Judaism, and many others, including Gateways Hospital, and was the founding vice president of Temple Beth Hillel. He had a funeral service, oh, sorry, he has a funeral service, well, he did today at noon, at Mount Sinai in Hollywood Hills, but in Lou Flowers Memorial Contributions may be made to Beit Tishuvah at www.b-i-e-t-t-s-h-u-v-a-h.org/donations.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. That concludes adjourning motions. That concludes our week. We take the roll, please, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. We will return on Tuesday. Monday is Martin Luther King Day.